Evening. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm calling the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order this Monday, August 18th of 2025. If you would be so kind as to either have a seat, squelch the voice box, turn off your phones, and we will get started. If we'd all please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Doing the business of Lee County, Lord. We ask for direction from you, Lord, because it is from you that we receive all knowledge. Lord, give us wisdom in each vote that we take, Lord. Guide each one of our steps tonight. Lord, thank you for the right and all the people that came out, Lord, to show their support, one way or another, on different events in our county. Thank you for living in a country that we have that right, Lord, tonight. And, Lord, we just ask you to have your way in this meeting tonight. Lead, guide, direct us in everything we do, Father God. We ask in your Son's name, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
We'll take your things. Public comments.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir. I just need your address there. Just a reminder, if you do have a cell phone, and if it rings, we'll stop and let you answer it. If not, if you don't want to be embarrassed, then please tone down your cell phone. That being said, we have the agenda items in front of you. Do I have any additional items? For your information, take item 3B. Under Special Presentation, we will hear from Duke Energy District Manager Sarah Stevens, and that's under 3B. We're going to pull item 2L from the Consent Agenda.
Which item was that? Which item?
2L on the Consent Agenda. We're pulling that for tonight. And then 3B is Duke Energy District Manager Sarah Stevens will speak briefly.
And then can we add indoor fire furnace to New Business?
Adding indoor fire furn- indoor iron furnace to New Business? That'll be 7C under New Business. Anything else? Any other additions? Yeah, we looked at it.
And what?
It's after comments.
After the comments?
Yes, sir.
Is there- there's no way to put it before comments? Am I correct?
Correct. Any further? Any further additions?
You can't put it ahead of comments.
That's up to the board if you-
Okay, the motion was to add it to the new- under New Business, item 7C.
Well, I can amend the motion if we should-
Do you wish to amend the motion, sir?
I'm not following what's going on right now. I thought we would do it earlier, much earlier.
Well, we have a special presentation, we have public hearings, two of them. We have public comments. Then we have Old Business.
This takes one vote.
I'm sorry?
This is one vote.
The indoor iron furnace.
On the motion, yeah.
Correct.
And why can't we just do it earlier?
It's under New Business.
I know where it is. I'm asking, why can't we do it sooner?
I can put it under Old Business, if you wish to amend the motion.
Let me see where Old Business is.
We have opioid litigation action items.
Old Business is after-
Public comments. Everybody's here to make a public comment on the subject of the indoor iron furnace.
This is not making a lot of common sense.
Okay. Do you wish to amend it? Put it under Old Business? We'll move it up. First item after Public Comments. You wish to amend it?
So move.
I- I- yeah.
Okay. So we'll amend it. Under Old Business, it'll be item 6A, and the opioid litigation action item will be item 6B. Any further additions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on, can I get the approval of the agenda as amended?
So move.
Motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving right along. We have the Consent Agenda as amended.
Move to approve the amended Consent Agenda.
Consent Agenda motion has been made to approve it as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. If we could please have the Lee County gymnastics team come forward. If it sounds like reindeer, it's because of all their medals. Facing- facing the board. You have them in order? Okay? All right? But we'll still recognize her. We'll still recognize her. Alyssa? This is always the fun part of the job. Proclamation recognizing the achievement of the Lee County gymnastics team. Whereas, the Lee County gymnastics team exhibited hard work, dedication, and exceptional talent in their recent competition and throughout the 2025 season. And, whereas, 12 gymnasts represented Lee County and competed in the- at the Amateur Athletic Union National Championship in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, from June 18th to June 21st, along with gymnasts from across the country. And, whereas, during this competition, Lee County gymnasts received six gold, seven silver, and one bronze medal with several gymnasts placing in events based on their age group. And, whereas, a couple weeks prior, the Lee County gymnastics team attended the AAU Southern Regional Championship in Greensboro, North Carolina, from June 6th to June 8th, competing against nearly 2,000 fierce competitors at the highest division in levels. And, whereas, the team performed admirably and secured a multitude of medals, including 14 gold, 16 silver, eight bronze, as well as three all-around gold medals, all three all-around silver medals, and one all-around bronze medal. And, whereas, earlier in the season, the Lee County gymnastics team attended the AAU North Carolina State Meet in Greensboro, North Carolina, April 25th through the 27th, facing over 1,000 gymnasts. And whereas, Lee County gymnasts were successful and brought home their highest scores of the season, resulting in the crowning of many state champions, including eight gold medalists, 14 silver medalists, and 12 bronze medalists, as well as two all-around gold medalists, two all-around silver medalists, and five all-around bronze medalists. And, whereas, the Lee County gymnastics team was victorious in their endeavors, held the values and morals of Lee County above all else, displayed grace in victory, dignity in defeat, and embodied the true meaning of teamwork and sportsmanship, which will carry them to success in future seas and in life. And, now therefore, the Lee County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim Thursday, August 21st, 2025, as Lee County Gymnastics Team Day in Lee County, North Carolina, and call upon the residents to observe this day, recognizing and celebrating the team and their contributions to and successes shared with the Lee County community. Presented this 18th day of August 2025, signed by myself and witnessed and attested by the clerk to the board, Haley Hall. Congratulations.
Mr. Chair, would you like to make a motion to approve the proclamation?
Motion's been made to approve the proclamation recognizing the achievements of the Lee County gymnastics team. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by a hearty aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, I would like to recognize Zuri Sadadi Hernandez Cruz. Please step forward, young lady. Oh, my word. Sanaya Britton and Zoe Shike. Samantha Davis. Brooke Singer. Alyssa Gonder's here? Carolina- oh, I missed Carolina. I'm sorry. Carolina Garso. All right, as is the standard tradition, we will all get together in front of the podium, in front of the table here with the team amongst us. Ladies, go ahead, gather forward. I'd like to make a special thank you to the parents for the many miles you've driven. Thank you to the staff for putting together such a successful program, and we appreciate all the input they put into it. Thank you. Computer is sleeping. Next item on the agenda under Special Presentations is Sarah Stevens with Duke Energy. Sarah, please come forward, introduce yourself. Tell us you're going to bring us plenty of electricity.
Okay. I feel like I left my jingle jangle at home because- but they brought it, so I think it's okay. Chair Smith, Commissioners, Manager, Mentor, and all who serve Lee County, as previously stated, I am Sarah Stevens. I am your district manager for government and community relations for Duke Energy. I cover Lee County, Chatham County, Durham County, and Orange County. I work with key leaders such as yourselves to address any lighting issues, power quality issues, storms, but I'm here even on those blue sky days. So I am your contact. I've actually left my contact information with the board clerk. You'll also be receiving a bi-monthly newsletter from me, so you know what's going on with Duke Energy and what's happening in the district. So thank you so much for inviting me here tonight, Chair Smith, and I look forward to working alongside you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome to the new job. Next item on the agenda is Public Hearing for the Fiscal Year 27 Department of Transportation Unified Grant Application Public Hearing. Karen's not here. You're going to fill in, Joanna? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, this is for Colts. I'm sorry, why is this Department?
What is the Department of Transportation?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Karen hit me up after the meeting this afternoon.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is the public hearing on the proposed Lee County Community Transportation Program application. As required as part of this hearing, notice was posted publicly and distributed to a number of departments, agencies, and advisory boards for dissemination to the public. Title VI participation forms are in the lobby, and we ask participants of the public hearing to complete and submit the form. You can do it to me. Completion of the form is completely voluntary and is used by NCDOT to gather statistical data on participants and beneficiaries. The Community Transportation Program provides assistance to coordinate existing transportation programs operating in Lee County, as well as provides transportation options and services for the communities within the service area. These services are currently provided using demand response and are rendered by the County of Lee Transit System. Lee County is currently a recipient of Community Transportation Program funding. On May 19th, 2025, the Lee County Board of Commissioners approved a resolution to submit a Community Transportation Program application for fiscal year 2027 to receive grant funding through the North Carolina Department of Transportation and U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration. If awarded, these funds can be used towards administration, operating, planning, and capital. The application process consists of three phases: pre-application, application, and contracting and compliance. During the pre-application phase, applicants will gather and prepare administrative documents, policies, and forms. In the application phase, the full application and supplemental documents are submitted, a public hearing is held, and local match is secured. In the final phase, contracting and compliance, applicants will receive their award documents, sign the agreement, and begin procurement. Compliance and reporting for the period for July 1st, 2026, through June 30th, 2027. At present, we are in the application phase, with final applications due October 3rd, 2025. Today's public hearing is to inform the public on the intent to apply and submission of three projects by Lee County Colts. 5311 Administrative, 5311 Combined Capital, and 5310 Mobility Management. The 5311 Administrative project requires 80% federal, 5% state, and 15% local share. Lee County Colts is eligible to receive a total amount of $265,2787 towards administrative operations. With guidance from NCDOT, the 5311 project is able to fund up to three administrative positions. The proposed budget will cover 100% of salary and fringe for the Transportation Director and Administrative Associate II, and 35% for the Administrative Associate I. Other expenses budgeted for in this project include office supplies and materials, postage, travel subsistence, utilities, telephone, advertising and promotion, employee training and education, lease of computer software, camera inspections, vehicle and liability insurance, and dues and subscriptions. The total amount requested for the 5311 Administrative project is $265,787 with a local share of $39,869. The 5311 Combined Capital Project requires an 80% federal, 10% state, and 10% local share. In accordance with the capital replacement schedule, Lee County Colts is eligible for replacement of four revenue vehicles and security and surveillance equipment in FY27. The proposed budget includes replacement of four 20-foot light transit vehicles with lifts, lettering and logos for each replacement vehicle, and replacement of the multi-component camera systems, which is a four-camera system for all fleet vehicles. The total amount requested for the 5311 Combined Capital Project is $592,462 with a local share of $59,247. The 5310 Mobility Management Project requires an 80% federal, 5% state- I'm sorry, 10% state, and 10% local share. Lee County Colts will utilize funds to increase access and eliminate barriers for the elderly and disabled population, as well as assist with microtransit throughout the county. The proposed budget will cover 100% salary and fringe for a full-time mobility manager and a part-time mobility manager, office supplies and materials, and travel subsistence. The total amount requested for the 5310 Mobility Manager Project is $158,846 with a local share of $15,885. The total funding request for the FY27 Community Transportation Program application is $1,017,095 with a total local share of $115,001. The County of Lee Transit System is dedicated to providing safe and reliable transportation to the citizens of Lee County. We ask that the chair now open the public hearing and invite citizens to speak on the funding request and the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanna. Before I open the public hearing, questions from the board? Commissioner Sharp?
I don't have any.
Commissioner Reeves?
No questions.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Mark?
No, thank you.
Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing on the Fiscal Year 27 Department of Transportation Unified Grant Application. Public hearing is now open. If you are in favor, please come forward. If so, please state your name as well as your address. If you are opposed to the Transportation Unified Grant Application, please come forward. State your name and address. Anyone else for? Anyone else against? Going once? Going twice? Public hearing is now closed on the transportation hearing. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the grant application and that the chairman sign all the supporting documents for the hearing and applications? Do we have- we need to waive this one? Okay, I heard it. Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. We need to waive this because it violates our policy of voting on it on the same night of reading of the public hearing.
Motion to waive our policy.
Motion been made to waive our policy. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now, do I have a motion to approve the Department of Transportation Unified Grant Application and allow the chairman to sign all supporting documents for the hearing and applications?
So move.
Motion's been made. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving right along. Next item is the zoning map amendment request. Before I get started, Amy, I'll beat you to it. A governing board member shall not vote on any legislative decision regarding a development regulation adopted pursuant to Chapter 160D where the outcome of the matter being considered is reasonably likely to have a direct substantial and readily identifiable financial impact on the member. A governing board member shall not vote on any zoning amendment if the landowner of the property, subject to a rezoning petition, or the applicant for a text amendment, is a person with whom the member has a close familial, business, or other associational relationship. Does any board member have a conflict? Seeing none, we'll move on. Amy?
Good evening, everyone. This is a joint public hearing with the Lee County Planning Board regarding a rezoning request of a Lower Monqueer Road. This information is on pages 151 through 199 of the Commissioners' Agenda Packet and on pages 7 through 51 of the Planning Board Agenda Packet. Trustwell Property Group LLC would like to rezone 430 acres with a frontage on the western side of Lower Monqueer Road from residential agricultural to light industrial to develop a light industrial business park. Therefore, this rezoning request has been submitted for your consideration. This is a standard general use rezoning request as opposed to a conditional rezoning request. Therefore, no site plans, subdivision plans, or building plans are required as part of this rezoning request. The site is in northeastern Lee County, southeast of the Raleigh Executive Jetport, east of Ammons Farm Road, north of Farrell Road, and west of Lower Monqueer Road. It's illustrated on the screen behind you, and these maps are also included in your Agenda Packet. The subject property visible from Lower Monqueer Road appears to have been timbered within the last few years and is bisected by a railroad. It's also opposite a cell tower. Opposite Lower Monqueer Road, I should say, from a cell tower. The existing zoning is residential agricultural, and this district is established to provide areas for low-density, single-family uses, low-intensity agricultural operations, as well as agribusiness and supportive industrial and commercial uses. Industrial operations are not permitted unless they clearly support an agricultural use. RA zoning protects, preserves valuable agricultural areas, implements agricultural protection zoning, establishes performance measures for rural businesses, preserves rural areas, preserves pastureland and agriculture, sets maximum permissible densities for new zoning districts, and defines specific areas for rural commercial uses. It also identifies areas appropriate for agricultural preservation. The proposed zoning of light industrial is established to provide for areas that contain a mix of light manufacturing uses, office park, and limited retail and service uses that service the industrial uses in an attractive business park setting with proper screening and buffering, all compatible with adjoining uses. There's a list of all the permitted uses for both zoning districts within the Agenda Packet for your reference. Regarding the adjacent zoning, and we'll flip to the next slide. We'll keep going till we get the zoning slide. One more. There we go. So the adjacent zoning, the site is surrounded by residential agricultural zoning, with lots to the north and east also having a mobile home park overlay district. Regarding adjacent land uses, and we want to flip back to the aerial image. There we go. The adjacent land uses included wooded vacant land and single-family homes. Local overlay districts, all of the subject property is located within the watershed conservation overlay district, specifically the Cape Fear Lee County watershed protected area. Development within this area is allowed, but there are maximum density and built upon area requirements designed to ensure the health of the watershed and to protect the public water supply. Also, the site has flood plain on it. The subject property has 100-year flood plain flood hazard area with non-encroachment area along the northern perimeter of the site associated with Hughes Creek. There's also 100-year flood plain with non-encroachment area along the southern perimeter of the site associated with Roberts Creek. All future development within this area must comply with the UDO flood plain regulations. The subject property is also within the airport overlay district, which is established to prevent the creation or establishment of obstructions or land uses that are hazards to air navigation, thereby protecting the lives and property of the users of the Raleigh Executive Jetport. And, the subject property is very large, and a portion of the site is located within the voluntary agricultural district, which appears to be- the voluntary agricultural district, which appears to be associated with an existing tree farm. The remaining balance of the site is located within the voluntary agricultural district notification radius of half a mile of a bona fide farm. The VAD program recognizes the importance of agriculture to the well-being of Lee County by encouraging voluntary preservation and protection of farmland from non-farm development. Regarding utilities, all proposed public water and sewer extensions must be approved by Tri River Water to verify compliance with all policies and regulations, including but not limited to off-site improvements and upgrades. Regarding transportation, the area proposed for rezoning has approximately 961 feet of frontage on Lower Monqueer Road. This is an NCDOT-maintained roadway with a 60-foot rideaway, and DOT must approve any new driveway or roadway connections to Lower Monqueer Road. If rezoned, all of the uses permitted in the light industrial zoning district will be allowed, and any future development of the subject property will be required to meet the current development standards of the UDO. Regarding the Plan San Lee, the subject property is very large and has two different land-use place types. Place Type 1 of the Long Range Plan identifies the area illustrated in green on the Plan San Lee Land Use Plan, and let's flip to that slide. If we can adjust the slides, I'll tell you when to stop. There we go. Thank you. Once again, the Plan San Lee Long Range Plan, this area has two designations because it's very large. The green designation, which is the majority of the site, is countryside, which seeks to protect agricultural and undeveloped lands outside of the urban service area and preserve the county's agricultural heritage. The second type is the industrial center, which is the purple area illustrated on the plan. This represents the community's largest industrial employers, has clusters of industrial parks and districts consisting of heavy infrastructure to support corresponding industrial processing and manufacturing. It's typically separated from lower-intensity residential uses by natural buffers at the periphery. All right, let's flip back, if you don't mind, to the aerial image so that when people get up to speak, they, there we go, thank you very much. Regarding the Plan San Lee, the Plan San Lee Land Use Plan designation of countryside is not supportive of industrial zoning or industrial land uses. The site is in a rural area surrounded by residential zoning and residential development. It's in a watershed conservation overlay district and has floodplain along the northern and southern perimeter. Therefore, careful consideration should be given regarding how the future development of this site in a light industrial manager, manner may impact the area residents. However, the site is bisected by railroad, and given the acreage needed for an industrial park and that the location and timing for the development of an industrial park tends to be market-driven, this land use is difficult to factor into a long-range land use plan. Ultimately, it is up to the Board of Commissioners to determine how the county should grow and if they're comfortable with light industrial zoning at this location. As always, additional information presented at the public hearing should be considered in the recommendation and the final decision regarding the requested zoning map amendment. This concludes my staff report, but I would like to note that I placed four letters at your seat that I received regarding this rezoning request. Two of the letters were submitted by the applicant, and I will let him review this information with you. One letter is from Mrs. Hunt, who owns land nearby, and Mrs. Hunt was fortunately able to attend this evening, and I will let her read her letter to you. And one letter is from the Triangle Land Conservancy, and I will read that letter to you, but first I would like to ask the board if you have any questions regarding the staff report before we get into receiving public input. Are there any questions regarding my staff report?
Questions for Amy. Commissioner Martin?
No.
Commissioner Lovick?
None, thank you, Amy.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
No questions.
Thank you.
All right. With your permission, I'll proceed with reading the letter from the Triangle Land Conservancy at this time.
Is it appropriate to start the public hearing now, prior to reading letters?
Yes, sir, please do.
I now open the public hearing on the rezoning request.
This letter is from the Triangle Land Conservancy, Sandy Switzer, Executive Director, to the Lee County Planning Board and County Commissioners. I'm writing on behalf of Triangle Land Conservancy to encourage you to consider the environmental impacts of the proposed rezoning of 430 acres off Lower Monqueer Road to light industrial use. TLC is a nonprofit land trust founded in 1983 that strives to create a healthier and more vibrant Triangle region by safeguarding clean water, protecting natural habitats, supporting local farms and food, and connecting people with nature. We contacted you about a rezoning request in this area last summer and appreciate the consideration you gave when reviewing that request. As large-scale industries are coming to Lee County, it's important to balance growth with the county's unique and beautiful open space, natural resources, and agricultural heritage. TLC protects wild and working lands that provide a variety of benefits for both wildlife and people. The farms and working forests of Lee County are important habitats for wildlife as they provide a mix of forested areas, open fields, and edge habitats in between. These lands are also critical for protecting water quality. This area is especially critical because the city of Sanford has its water intake just downstream of where Litt Creek enters the Cape Fear River on a property that TLC conserved in 2022. Protecting forested land along tributaries in this area is one of the best ways to ensure Sanford maintains clean drinking water for its citizens. Developing the 430-acre tract that is proposed for rezoning would increase impervious surface, resulting in higher rates of runoff that could impact drinking water and increase the risk of downstream flooding. Roberts Creek borders the land for about 3,800 feet on the southern side, and the Hughes Creek floodplain borders it for approximately 2,800 feet on the northern side. These streams flow into Litt Creek, a tributary of the Cape Fear River, less than two miles downstream. Developing this area could have negative impacts on the water quality in these streams and in turn contribute further to the water quality issues in Litt Creek and the Cape Fear River, both of which are impaired waterways according to the NC Department of Environmental Quality. The San Lee Land Use Plan has identified the majority of the subject tract as countryside, where preservation of agricultural heritage and rural lifestyle is recommended. Most of the 430-acre tract is prime or statewide important soil, some of the most productive agricultural soils which are being lost to development rapidly. The Land Use Plan seeks to establish new development in areas that are most suitable with existing infrastructure away from productive working lands. TLC supports this type of sustainable growth and encourages the Planning Board and Commissioners to consider this in the evaluation of this rezoning request. Triangle Land Conservancy is looking forward to working with the county on farmland preservation efforts and will continue to look into the Land Use Plan for the county's priority areas for agricultural protection. Thank you for considering the impacts of industrial use in a critical watershed and the importance of forested lands for wildlife, water quality, and the people of Lee County. Sincerely, Sandy Switzer, Executive Director, Triangle Land Conservancy.
All right, I have the public hearing signup sheet. I will start with the first. Just a reminder, when you come to the microphone, please state your name and your address. The first individual is John Keener.
My name is Jonathan Keener. I'm managing partner with Trustwell Property Group and Helix Ventures. We very much appreciate the time we have to speak tonight in speaking with you and introducing the project back in May. I was hoping to be in front of you sooner, but have appreciated the amount of work that we've put in to make sure that the site is fully diligent and we're able to answer the questions that we've had from the neighbors that we've reached out to, as well as those who've reached out to us, and in working with the county and the planners in particular to make sure that the questions and concerns around the development of property are fully addressed and fully taken care of. And I hope with the presentation that I have to show tonight is the result of those discussions, and we very much consider those to be critical to the proper and sustainable development of anything here in Lee County, of which this is our third development. So we're happy to be here. We're a very local group and part of the community, and would love to show you a little bit more about the plan we have for the site. Thank you very much. Vector Innovation Park, we've taken the name from our adjacent connectivity with the jetport. As it expands, it's been an asset in Lee County. We hope that this park in particular will be able to benefit that and grow it further into the future as a benefit to everyone here, as well as the growth in sustainable jobs and tax base for the community. And for those of you who weren't with us in May, I wanted to take a chance to introduce ourselves. Helix Ventures is a very local group. All of our investors, as well as myself, have grown up in the central part of North Carolina our entire lives, and we are a proven industrial leader creating four business parks. Vector will be our fourth business park here. Oakview and Camp Helix are in Holly Springs. Helix Innovation Park at the Brickyard, we've developed here in Lee County and is now the new home to Kiowa Kirin, who you may have seen is under development now. There we are. And we have combined 60 years or more actually of real estate experience now and have worked with the state, the county, and local leaders to bring nearly $6 billion worth of economic development projects to our state, of which we're very proud. Over the last six years, we've made a major impact on the life science, as well as advanced manufacturing industry right here on US1, where we all live and work. Some of the industries that we serve are pharmaceutical companies like the one you see above, Fuji Film, Amgen, and now Genentech in Holly Springs, selling gene therapy companies, but also device manufacturing and packaging companies. Advanced specialty component manufacturing, things, critical infrastructure for electrical, aerospace, and batteries in particular for other sustainable technologies for electronic vehicles. Sustainable energy and tech infrastructure solutions are critical to the growth, as mentioned with Duke Energy earlier today, and power is one of the key reasons why this site makes a lot of sense in the San Lee Long Range Plan, as well as the connectivity to rail, which makes it unique among most sites that you will see here in Lee County, as well as across the state. But we couldn't ask for a change in zoning without demonstrating how it fulfills distinct community goals. One of the core goals of the comprehensive plan is to promote balanced growth in underdeveloped areas that already have needed infrastructure. There is water sewer infrastructure, most particularly with CEMC's new substation going in adjacent to the site. There's also power that's needed for most major advanced manufacturing developments. Now, we also have gas that's accessible from the area, but most particularly we have rail directly connected to the site, and being able to connect the power to the rail with this rezoning allows companies to come here. Companies simply won't come without the entitlements in place or the utilities accessible. They won't even look at the sites. That's why rezoning is critically important in order to properly present the site to the companies like Kiowa Kirin or similar advanced manufacturing companies that we all desire to come here to create the job growth and the balance that we look forward to. So this area in particular is here to increase areas for the employment centers that we're talking about now, and in creating that light industrial park is there to complement the jetport and the expansion that it's had, that was just announced in the papers today, as well as matching the industrial area envisioned by the San Lee Plan originally. We want to expand the commercial tax base of the county to help reduce the residential tax burden that you would otherwise have to face. Increasing residential tax rates are never a popular thing, and commercial development, in particular industrial development that brings quality jobs to the area, is one of the best way to combat that issue, and also to provide funding for the other community needs that are often overlooked or underfunded. So those community benefits, including those high-paying jobs, not just on the site, but also induced jobs. Typically, it's been seen from the National Bureau of Labor Statistics, one advanced manufacturing job, life science job typically induces five to six additional jobs in the community. Those are jobs like additional jobs in insurance, another bank teller, certainly waiters and servers, creating new small businesses to support those new jobs coming into the community. Those are the induced jobs that often get overlooked, but is one of the core benefits of developing an industrial park like this one. Paying for those new community benefits for everyone to enjoy, like parks and other amenities also come hand-in-hand with development like this, increasing that tax base without increasing the burden on existing schools and other amenities is also key. Unlike single-family home developments where you'll have multiple families moving in, multiple children moving in, and putting burden on schools and additional spending in particular for the county, commercial developments are creating the jobs to pay for those rather than overburden those community amenities. This will provide long-term relief for the residential taxpayers by increasing that commercial tax base, but in particular with our project, in particular with this site, creating sustainable projects with responsible environmental design is key for us. We've developed it across all of our parks. In particular, you can see them at work at the Brickyard already, but we're working to use environmental designs that will be maintained properly by these business groups coming in to have long-term benefits and protections for the surrounding areas, and I'm going to show more about that right now. So the project overview, if you wouldn't mind going back just one. Go ahead and skip ahead, please. And to the next slide. So there we go. Amy's done a wonderful job of reviewing the rezoning, about the 430 acres that we have here. Some of those allowed uses, light manufacturing, assembly, packaging, other similar commercial uses that would occur in these buildings. Building heights often is a concern. Being in the airport overlay district shouldn't be a concern here because we have to respect the airspace of the jetport. One of the letters that you see in your packet that were presented today is a letter of support from the jetport, saying industrial development, just like this one, is one of the best buffers and protections for jetports and municipal airports like theirs in the country. Typically, the encroachment of single-family homes is one of the things that shuts down municipal airports and reduces their ability to provide benefits to the community. They're very much in favor and support, and we thank them for that and look forward to cooperating with them moving into the future. One thing you will not see and never see in this rezoning, heavy industrial, mining, heavy chemical processing, there'll be no coal ash, petroleum, or asphalt plants, no metal smelting, animal processing, junkyards, waste facilities, landfills, or ever any other heavy manufacturing use. One of the reasons why we're presenting you with a general rezoning is that you have the ordinances in place, you know them well, and we are abiding by those zoning so you can have constant confidence moving forward that the light manufacturing uses are the ones that are desired for a light manufacturing zoning. In addition to that, there'll be no residential usage of any kind on this site, which greatly reduces the amount of traffic throughout the day that we've paid. On a 430-acre site developed at four to six units per acre, that's more than 1,800 or 2,200 units, you could possibly yawn there, would create an enormous amount of traffic. One of the other things that commercial development like this one does, controlled traffic typically shift work that is spread over different time periods during the day, but also the commercial development are responsible for the infrastructure and the improvements for the roadways that happen around them. Improvements required by NCDOT for anything here is a responsibility of the development and will not be a burden of the county to deliver. So reaching out to the San Lee Long Range Plan, why this fits here, why we envisioned working here, and why we spent so much time over the last three years putting this together for you. 25% of the space is already included in the comprehensive plan and identified as an industrial center. That space at the top, adjacent to the jetport. What this misses is the Norfolk Southern Rail Line that is running through and bisecting the bottom portion of the site. Why we're requesting this zoning is it will allow us to connect the power at the top of the site there with the railway to create a use on really what has only been former timberland, to create an industrial center, to create the tax base and support for the surrounding regions. We believe the development of this and the extension of the already envisioned industrial center directly to the north allows us to really fulfill the vision of the comprehensive plan in a way that protects and provides not just a natural buffer, but also a very physical buffer of that railway from the more sensitive properties that are south of our site. As a commitment that we've put together wholly above any requirement from the comprehensive plan, none of the land to the south of the railway, whether it be in the floodplain or the open land that is there, which is a total of about 56 acres, would be left completely undeveloped and as a natural buffer to protect the balance of the community, and in particular to protect Roberts Creek as it rolls by, very much in consideration of what we've heard from the Triangle Land Conservancy, as well as other neighbors. We consider that highly important.
Do you want?
So those- So though no specific full plans are required, we wanted to show you the development so you have an idea of how we're going to fulfill our own design ordinances that we take very seriously during construction, as well as during operations. On this site, you'll see in green, the roadway system coming from Lower Moncur Road. And if you would, hit the first button. These are the identified flood areas on the site. These are the areas that will have absolutely no development within them. Even though we could go through different processes, as Amy mentioned, we're committing now and are writing this into our property ordinances that will govern the site moving forward, that there will be no development in the floodplain. Next. And though Lee County currently has no requirements for stream buffers, all the jurisdictional streams, which we've already identified through our due diligence process, they will have stream buffers as well. And we'll avoid the stream crossings, as you can see from the roadway network. We're avoiding the stream crossings in all the identified streams across the site. Again. And we're going to utilize the best management practices, not just for the county, but the more stringent requirements of the state, to eliminate the impacts during normal operations and constructions of stormwater flowing off-site. If you would hit it. And we're going to be attenuating the 10-year storm during construction, which is often overlooked, as well as during operations. And having it in an industrial site, as opposed to potentially in a single-family home development, these ponds and detention areas will be maintained by those owners and by those businesses. So there is a direct correlation between ownership of those attenuating facilities and their maintenance going forward long-term, so that both the county and the neighbors know that the impacts created within our site are controlled within our site, and we are responsible for those, fully and completely. If you would, again. The stormwater infrastructure for all of this, as you'll note, even though they're simple circles on the page, all the infrastructure is kept out of those streams and away from that floodplain as well, to make sure that there's, one, an additional buffer, but, two, an extra level of design and consideration for that attenuation of the stormwater rolling off the site that otherwise could roll off the site unmitigated. We simply don't do that. We haven't done that at any of our parks here, and we won't do that here. We've gone through and fully diligent the site for wildlife as well, as part of our base project, even before we bought the due diligence forward. No threatened or endangered species as we've moved through, nor is the development seen to have a negative impact on the habitats moving forward from there. We make that a very large part of our base due diligence. It wouldn't bring a property forward to you that had impacts on habitats, especially for endangered species. We are far away from the deep river, even though these creeks are here, but we consider protecting those creeks, no matter how far we are away, and protecting that watershed important to it. And that's why we've designed it this way and taken on these additional design considerations to make sure that they're taken care of. They'll be incorporated into our Property Owners Association, so regardless of the community's guidelines, should they be less stringent than what's in our Property Ownership Association guidelines, they will have to, whether we develop, or we sell a small portion off for an owner or company to develop themselves, they have to abide by those regulations. Should it become more stringent for the state, they'll have to abide by those more stringent state regulations as well. And we look forward to making sure that regardless of how it's developed and under what regulation, these areas are going to be protected. If you would, again. But on top of that, one of the biggest things is preservation of the appearance in the countryside as well, as we've done with the Brickyard, as we've done with other properties that we've developed as industrial that are adjacent to residential areas. We've proposed the most stringent buffer in the comprehensive plan, which is a 50-foot-wide Type B landscape buffer. In working with the Ammons Farm family, Joel and Mrs. Ammons, we made a promise to them that they would have the most stringent buffer there. They've worked with us and partnered with us to make decisions on how the property is put together. And what we've committed to them, we commit to all the neighbors that we have here. You'll have the same buffer around the entire site that borders any residential area, or any non-industrial use that happens there. That same 50-foot-wide landscape buffer will be there. You can see at the top of the site, we have an existing sewer connection. That's a gravity sewer connection that we can tap into from the site without impacting any other sites, or Hughes Creek, where we can bore under and tie in without having an environmental impact and tie right into the sewer connection that's available to us today. If you would. But most importantly, even though there is developable land south of the rail system, we're committing now and have, there will be no development south of the rail line. So that will preserve, even though it's outside of the floodplain, it'll preserve an additional, approximately 20 acres of full forest and buffer. We simply won't touch it. And that should provide really the densest buffer that we've seen in all of my development work over 20 years in protecting this area. We consider it something that is the right thing to do. I think a lot of questions come up. We have an easy time saying what these things are, saying what's easy to do. I think it's much better to show what we do on our parks as a commitment. What you see in front of you right now is a view of Lower Moncur Road looking south. I took this last Thursday, so it wasn't quite as bright as it was today, unfortunately. But what you see is natural buffer to the right. You'll see the taller trees. Our property line obviously starts where the shorter pines are. The entirety of this land has been timberland. It's owned by Warehouser and various other groups that have timbered it repeatedly over the years. It's caused fairly dramatic erosion in certain places, but that's why the trees are so short here right now. But it looks very similar to the way most of our parks start out, in particular the one in Holly Springs, if you'll hit a picture. This is what Friendship Road, which runs right through the middle of our Camp Helix development, looks like in Holly Springs today. This is the undeveloped portion of it right now. It is the roadway, same two-lane divided roadway, trees lining both sides. These are more mature slash lines that we have here on this site. And if you'll move forward, this, if we simply turn north, and again, this was taken on Thursday, looking north, this is what the development roadway looks right behind you. And it's not just trees behind it, what is directly behind that trees is Amgen's main campus. What they've built out is a 250,000-square-foot campus with approximately 70-foot-tall buildings behind it, of which we see nothing. The only reason that we have smaller trees up front is a sidewalk was desired by the community. We added that in to our cross-section for our roadway, and included lights there with bike lanes as well, as a benefit to the community, so everybody could continue to enjoy this strip of road, and most particular, the natural buffer that they see. If you'll flip to the next picture. This is the entryway to Amgen, and you can't quite see it, but way, way back in the middle left there is the actual manufacturing building that's approximately 70 feet tall. But all you'll see is the front entryway and the trees happening in front of it. This is what a 50-foot-plus natural buffer looks like, and what we'd be proposing here. If you would, one more time. And this is what the back of the site looks like. Just left of the cell tower that you see there, about to the middle of the picture, that's where Amgen's main facility has already been built and sits. This is a 70-foot-tall building, or just shy of 70 feet tall, building, and it can't be seen from the natural buffer that's there. This is how we develop the properties. This is how we work with the companies that are making huge changes for all our lives, work with communities when we find the right place and with the right community to work with. And this is what we would like to see for our industrial property here at Vector Park. If you would, again. But obviously, there'll be buildings there. And I understand in the rezoning, we want to give you an idea of how we develop, what kind of buildings that we bring in. And I don't want to just show you buildings that are pretty pictures of things, but things that are actually getting done, things that we actually do here, so you can get an idea of who we are, how we treat our properties, and how we treat the communities that we live and work in. These renderings are from Kewa Kirin. They're right here in Sanford. They're being built right now. They have already topped out in steel, and these are the images that they put together and distributed as they were working through with us on the site. It will be an absolutely gorgeous campus with inside there. This, too, will most likely be hidden by trees. It will be completely hidden by trees, actually, from Hawkins Avenue. But once you're inside the site and on the public roadway that we are building now with sidewalks, it will be an absolute beautiful architectural facility that will be the envy of the area. It's even better looking than what we have in Amgen, which is the next slide, if you will. These are the completed Amgen structures that are there. This is the first phase of their campus. What you're looking at in the top center picture is their headquarters and the initial stage of manufacturing building, the other manufacturing building behind them. Again, these are 70-foot-tall buildings, but you can see clearly the line of the trees behind it, where the trees mask the entire building. This is how the campuses are desired to be developed, both by us, as well as by our clients. And we think it's a benefit for the surrounding neighborhood to be able to see, they get to continue to enjoy the natural buffers that they have now, and still get to enjoy the benefits of having a strong commercial tax base to buoy the needs of the community. And if you would, for the last picture. These are typical projects that we build ourselves, typical buildings that we've designed to include on our site. Again, they're manufacturing buildings, but they're designed to be light, open, and interact with surroundings. Again, very low lying. We're not talking about high, tall buildings, smokestacks that would typically be associated with a heavy industrial zoning district. These are light industrial buildings and a light industrial district. And this is what we do, and hopefully what we do well in bringing to our communities. If you would, at the end. So in conclusion, the community and project goals here are to match what the comprehensive plan is desired, and is expanding the employment areas to create additional positive growth for Lee County. That is our first purpose and priority here. We're expanding ways to protect those surrounding areas by adding those buffers, as well as going above and beyond with the stormwater management practices that will enact and make part of the design guidelines for anyone developing within the park. We're providing the balanced tax base for the benefit of the residents, as well as providing funding for the community amenities that we know are near and dear to the communities, and what Holly Springs has created so much of their community built on. Progress. Right now, you're seeing the first steps that we've taken in designing it. We fully diligence the site to make sure it's the right place and won't have negative impacts on the area, whether it be wildlife for the neighborhood or the communities. And we're partnering with SAGA to bring multiple major proposals here right now. We've talked through a number of projects that have desired first rail, as well as electrical, that have required very little water and sewer service. Of the last five projects that we've talked to, they would require maybe 120,000 gallons per day, all total, but would deliver north of $1.5 billion in new investment, new capital investment in the county. Power and rail are their main requirements, and that's what makes this site unique and why this rezoning is so important. Because these great companies that we would love to have here simply will not come, and we've fallen off the list for all of these companies that we've tried to attract, because the tract has not been entitled, and the questions about zoning risk is the biggest problem that most of these companies have, because they would like to bring it to market and deliver their products as soon as possible. And what we can do as a community, and what we can do as a developer, is make sure that we get the right pieces of property under the right zonings to develop in the right way with the companies that we want here. And that's what we're trying to do with our Vector Innovation Park, and I'm more than open to questions to talk more about it.
Thank you, John. Questions for Mr. Keener. Commissioner Sharp?
No questions.
Commissioner Reeves?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
I know you can't say without knowing the companies going in, but how many jobs would you project out of the businesses going in?
So if we took what Kewa Kirin has brought in, they're a $530 million project, bringing initially 100 jobs to the area, though they hope to expand it. They take up about 75 acres. So if we look at the acreage that we have left over from the 430, after we've set aside the area south of the railway as undeveloped, there's about 370 acres left. If we simply multiply it, we end up with about 500-plus new jobs would come out there, and probably about $2.6 billion in capital investment, potentially, if we had a similar type of company, or a company with similar investment and employment needs coming through. What we've seen the last five or six companies that we've talked to, in particular, that wanted rail, wanted reliable power, but did not need a lot of water or wastewater, which most life science companies need a lot of water and wastewater, but the companies that do not need that, what we've seen in talking with those last five people, they would take up about 310 acres, potentially produce about 100 or 1.8 billion in capital investment, and have up to 2,500-plus new jobs if we had gotten those companies and brought them here. We weren't able to make it farther down the list, because the entitlements and the rezoning was not in place already, and that was their major roadblock. Otherwise, what we've put together and what we've set up and what infrastructure is in place there right now is ideally what some of these companies are looking for, when the reasons why we're developing the property is to not miss out on some of these really dynamic and game-changing companies for our community.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Commissioner Martin?
No, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Continuing with the public hearing sign-up sheet, and just a reminder, when you come forward, please state your name, as well as your address. And please let us know if you're in support or opposed to the rezoning request. Once we're done, Amy, what room are we moving to? Is there going to be enough room if there's a... You're going to pack them in? Okay. Is there a way we could get another room if it gets too cramped? Haley said yes. David said yes. I don't see you, David. Got it, okay. We'll just keep an eye on it. We don't want the fire marshal to throw us out. All right, moving on. George Gilson, Jr., please, come forward, sir. State your name and your address, please.
George Gilson, Jr. I'm at 124 Godwin Court, and that's right outside of the city limits on Lower Moncur Valley Road. First of all, thank you for having me and listening to how I feel about this proposal. I simply reject this proposal, and I hope you do as well. Number one, I've never seen a light industrial site that has added any value to nearby residential homes, countryside appeal, and ag lands, or the overall protection of the land, waterways, and tributaries on, near, or around them. I live in the new homes being built off Lower Moncur Road, after 11th becomes Lower Moncur Road. If you know that area of the city of Sanford, exiting into the county, there are beautiful large single-family homes in Moncur Valley and the new subdivision connecting to it. These homes bring value to the blighted area off 11th, and make a beautiful gateway in and out of Sanford and in the county. I am asking the board to reject this proposal to uphold their countryside objectives of protecting ag land and our rural charm, our tributaries, our waterways, the rivers, and our environment as a whole, as well as the associated nearby land values and home property values of which I am a part of. This is not right for the beautiful countryside, ag land, and gorgeous homes being built to increase the appeal of Lower Moncur Valley Road. In Lee County, there is no good buffer for 430 acres of light industrial. I don't care how you spin it. There's also, has never been a light industrial area with rail that has been protective of our waterways and our environment. Developers such as these LLCs love to promise that, but in all practicality, are always out for their own profit and never to protect the land. Values, ag lands, and the environment. Please reject this proposal. These are, there are good places for these type of projects, but this is not one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rex Chesum. Rex?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak to you all tonight. My name is Rex Chesum. I live at 3443 Lower Moncur Road. I've lived in Lee County since 1982, and I've lived at that particular address since 1985, 1986. And I'm here to speak in opposition to this proposal. And I'm here to speak in opposition to this proposal. I've lived here, like I said, since 82, or the community in that address since 86, and that pales in comparison with a lot of people here sitting behind me. When I moved here, I realized I'd moved into a very special community. I grew up in Army Brad. I was all over the country. But I moved into, the first time in my life, a place that was defined, excuse me, defined by longstanding family land and property and being passed down through generations. There's people behind me that have lived and died in this area for generations now, and I've been an honor to be a part of it. But, you know, I feel ill-prepared tonight. I didn't, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, and what I saw a minute ago had me thinking, well, I just need to go home. I mean, sign me up. This looks beautiful, you know, trees and all these pretty buildings. Well, you know, I think we can all see past that and realize that, you know, development's wonderful, but it comes with a price, okay? Let's all be reminded of the price it comes with. And in my case, what I see is it changes the way of life for a lot of good, solid Lee County citizens that have lived, died, paid taxes in this community, voted in this community, and care about this place. You know, I heard a lot about, look at what we did up in Holly Springs, or look what we did over here or up there. You know, it's all beautiful. Well, do we really want to be the next Holly Springs or Apex? I mean, I'm sure there's some people here that embrace it, okay? No offense meant, but a lot of us don't want to see that happen. So I would implore you to think about that. There's other places. Lee County's already growing like crazy, right? We can all agree with that. And in a lot, large measure, it's been a good thing, but let's not kid ourselves, not all of it's good. If you've lived here as long as a lot of us, you realize a lot of the change has been positive, but a fair bit of it has been negative. Our way of life, our way of travel, you know, it takes me like 30 minutes to get from Lower Monqueer Road over to Lowe's now. It didn't used to be that way, you know? So again, I'd ask you to think long and hard about this. It's a, it's a, an area of the county rich in tradition, large tracts of land. We don't have houses, developments all over the place. We don't, you know, Lower Monqueer Road, if you've been on it, you might have seen me because I run up and down. I've run, I've jogged down that road for about 40 years now, and it's a wonder I ain't got run over and we put this project in. I probably will get run over, but hopefully not. But thank you for your time, and I appreciate it. Please vote against it.
Thanks, sir. I think this is Keeley Purvis. Keeley Purvis, is that correct?
Poritch.
Spell that, please.
P-U-R-I-C-Z.
Got it, thank you.
Ukrainian. Keeley Poritch, 363 Angel Road, Sanford, North Carolina. I'm getting anxiety just standing in front of you because I was here in 2017 talking about coal ash. I really wasn't prepared to come and talk to you about this, but I will be putting a letter together and send it to you. I came to talk about Endor, which is...
I'm sorry, this is a public hearing for the development?
The re...
Rezoning?
Yes, rezoning.
Stay on that subject, please.
But Endor is about kayaking and camping and the green space.
We'll get...
So I'm going to talk about this as green space.
Okay, thank you.
I'm concerned about the water. We know what happened with the coal ash from Duke Energy's coal ash repurposing in Chatham County and the water issues that Chatham County is having, and that's why we sell a lot of water. Where are they going to get this water from? All this light industrial? But this is definitely bringing back anxiety on the fight that we had against coal ash in our little community. And those of you that weren't here in 2017, look it up. I'm against this rezoning, and I hope you listen to the community about keeping green
My name's Mark Mansfield. I'm totally opposed against this.
Where do you live, sir?
3521 Lower Monqueer Road. I'm third generation on the farm, last one left. We still got five, it'd be five altogether counting grandchildren that still come down there. My grandpa, my grandma, my uncles, my daddy, we have all fought long and hard over this land, and we paid property tax and done the best we can with it. Been raising tree farm down there for probably 35 to 40 years. I started looking after it when I was 20-some years old. Daddy said, "Learn it or we'll sell it." So that's what I took over. That's the way it is. And you're sitting here, I mean, this cat must have been a car salesman before he started this, because I'm going to tell you, all this stuff and these pretty buildings, this is Kerry, this is Wake County, this is Apex. We don't want this down here. We don't need it down there. We still be able to shoot our guns, we can hunt, we can fish, we can do what we want to. We don't need no light industrial park. And I don't care what he says about a buffer, there is no buffer that going to work down there. I have seen that creek cross all the way over the road when it flooded. When hurricanes come in and as much rain as we've been getting here lately, that road is going to flood out. It's no way he's going to buffer that water. And that water goes, just like they say, right straight to the river. And then we sell the water and we drink the water. So I am totally opposed to this, and a lot of other people do. It's going to change our whole way of life down there. I don't know how many people that come down there. Amazon comes to delivers, FedEx, UPS, they come out and I meet them, and you know what they tell me? They say, "You are so lucky to live down here. It is beautiful down here to have all this land down here, such a pretty yard, all this stuff." It's so pretty when we come down the road down here with all these peoples, how good their yards look and everything, how you've got space in here. It's beautiful. We wish we could live down here. But if you got to sit here and do what I call the Yellowstone Effect, is sit here and have to fight for your land, come up here, waste your time when I could be at home watching TV or enjoying the outside to sit up here and have to keep fighting for land. It won't even a year ago beside me, the land was for sale, they proposed to do it for heavy industrial, and they backed out at the last minute. And the land's still for sale over there half of it, and it still worries me death. Who's going to buy that land? Are you going to let something like this come in and come right beside me? And that's all I got to say. I hope y'all really think about this. We need to slow down in Lee County period with this growth because we're growing too fast, way too fast. We have got to stop. We have got to stop and take a deep breath and sit here and look, we're filling the pockets of people up in Wake County. We're Lee County, proud Lee County people, proud of our heritage, proud, let's leave some things alone. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Jeff Kidd?
Hello, I'm Jeff Kidd. I live at 4217 Lower Monqueer Road. I am opposed to this development. This property backs up right to my property and my neighbors. We have a farm, we're a USDA-registered farm. We raise Maitonic goats. We sell those for breeding stock, also raise chickens and sell the eggs. I work a corporate job up in RTP, but mainly I work from home. I lived in Apex for 18 years. I moved to Lee County in '22. When I first lived in Apex, there were farms, you could drive around without any kind of issue, and over the 18 years, I saw those farms get bought up, turn into different types of development, whether it be residential or commercial development. And when I looked for someplace to live, I looked where I could still make it to work, but where I could get land and I could be out in the country like I wanted. My planning was to eventually to move here and then build up my farm, and so when I retire, I would retire and just do farming full-time, right? We already have to deal with the airport noise, and most days it's not that bad, but they tend to like to fly real low over our property. The jet noise, especially when it's a low ceiling, they like to really make it very loud. Not only does it disturb me, but it disturbs my animals, impacts them, causes them stress. I'm concerned with any kind of pollution, light pollution to start with. They're going to want to have to have lights on those facilities. Right now, you can go out at night and it's pitch-black dark and see the sky. There's no ambient light coming from any parks nearby. We live on a well, right? We don't have city water where I'm at. It doesn't run down Lower Monqueer where we're at. I'm very concerned about any kind of water pollution, right? They can't control 100% of the water, right? Whether it comes off of the pavements or whether there's a spillage or anything of that effect, it could end up in my well, and I have to worry about that. I worry about that it's an industrial site, that I don't know what's going into the industrial site. They can't tell me whether it's going to be some type of manufacturer or something that may be dealing with chemicals. And even if it is controlled, there's always a spill and it always ends up in the water. I also worry about trespassing where we're at, right? I have a farm. I don't need people coming in and thinking they can walk across my property, they can go and pet or feed my animals or introduce some type of disease into my farm. So I'm very concerned with it, and I would like for you to vote no on this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Art Gibson?
I live on 2811 Lower Monqueer Road. I don't have any speech or nothing, but I'm opposed to this. Like a lot of them say, there's a lot of generations of farming and everything down there. That's where my granddaddy, great-granddaddy grew it up, but I oppose it. I hope y'all agree that we don't need it.
Thanks, sir. Diana Joyner?
I live at 3521 Lower Monqueer Road, and the only thing I can say is I oppose it as well. These guys that's been speaking, they've done a great job covering why we should not have it in our area, and I agree with them. So I hope y'all do as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Derek Epps?
I live at 664 Cletus Hall Road. Just recently, in the past year, finished my home being built out in family land particularly. We speak of generations and knowing that is hometown. I've been born and raised here my entire life, and it was one of my lifelong goals to be able to live in the area that I am now. Over the course of the years, graduating from here, graduating from Lee Senior and CCC, C.C.C., I've worked my whole life to say I can live and maintain in Sanford, North Carolina. Seeing this come up just so recently after purchasing and building on the land that family owned, this really upsets me to see this so close to being home. I'm part of well-water system as well, and this is one of those things where no one can come up here and tell you that their system is 100% effective. There's always that 1%. There's no things that are 100. And being a father of two girls and living off the land and well-water and other things that are affected by such an area so close down the road as this, when I drive by every day, it would absolutely upset me to see so much of our land beauty go to waste for something of such when we expect it near to the town. I support every neighbor that I have here up and down Lower Monqueer Road, and I just want to let you know that I'm opposed to this situation. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Edward Odom?
Chair Smith and Board, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Edward Odom, 888 Henry Odom Road, Bear Creek, North Carolina, but I'm here to represent Central Electric Membership Corporation that we are building a substation to the northeast of this property. When two or three years ago, the city of Sanford was looking to expand the water plant, they proposed the idea to Central Electric. We did not have enough capacity at the time, so we went to looking for property. If any of you are aware of, when you look to build substations in the distribution system, you need to be along the transmission lines, which Duke has two transmission lines crossing this property. One of our options fell through because of wetlands. The only option we had left available was through the Trust Well Group. I will have to speak for the Trust Well Group, that everything they worked with us to be able to obtain the land for Central Electric to build a new substation. We have since passed our special use permit. We are in the process of getting ready to build the substation. The substation is in support of the Lee County Regional Airport, of course, the city of Sanford expansion of the water plant. So again, I'm up here to speak on their integrity that everything that they promised and worked us with to help get the special use permit, they were very instrumental in that for us because we were out of options, and had that not been the case, we really have no idea where we would end up with our property. So again, I did want to just speak on behalf of their integrity to help us with the projects with that. So thank you for your time. I appreciate you letting me speak.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Did I pronounce that right?
Yes, sir. My name is Joshua Tognor, 5258 Lower Monqueer Road. I am opposed to this project. Myself and my family are newer residents to this area and moved here to escape large developments such as this and live the lifestyle that this community provides. I am a career blue-collar worker, and I've been around projects such as this my whole career. Projects like this are not pretty well under construction, no matter what anybody says, and will take a serious toll on our brand-new road that I'm sure we are all happy to have. This terrain is where I want to raise my kids and have them be able to retire on our land. We are on the creek downstream of this, and I have serious concerns of water flow. I want to thank everybody here who has had the opportunity to speak and has voiced their opinions, and thank you guys very much.
Thank you, sir. Mickey Hunt?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Miki Hunt. I live at twenty-two-nineteen California Street Northwest in Washington DC, and I maintain a residence in Sanford at twenty-one-twenty Lee Avenue. You might think that I'm an outsider to the Lower Moncur Road, but in fact, my family has owned property there for generations. I think in seventeen ninety-six, Isham Rosser came into the county and bought a tract of land there, which has been passed down through the Rosser and Hunt family for generations. I am a direct descendant of Isham Rosser about eight or nine generations back. So I'm writing to ask you to consider the environmental impacts of the requested rezoning of the four-hundred-and-thirty-acre tract on the Lower Moncur Road to light industrial use. I own two-hundred-and-eighty-five acres of property directly across the Lower Moncur Road from the three-hundred-and-thirty-acre tract. My land consists of two contiguous tracts, a twenty-acre tract with road frontage and a two-hundred-and-sixty-five-acre tract behind it. Roberts Creek flows along the boundary and into my land on its northern side before joining Hughes Creek, which in turn flows into Rick Lick Creek, which in turn flows into the Cape Fear River, as shown in the topographical map that is on the letter that I submitted to you there. So anything that goes into Roberts Creek ultimately ends up in the Cape Fear River. So any runoff from industry on the four-hundred-and-thirty-acre tract will likely enter Roberts Creek and by this route enter the Cape Fear River. The city of Sanford has its water intake just downstream where Lick Creek empties into the Cape Fear River. If the rezoning request is approved, runoff from the industrial site could have a negative effect on Sanford's water supply. Without knowledge of the type of industry that would be located on the four-hundred-and-thirty acre tract and its potential impact on Sanford's water, approval of the rezoning request could result in damage to Sanford's water supply that might be challenging to remediate. I also ask you to consider the impact that development of the four-hundred-and-thirty-acre tract on traffic and the need for improved road infrastructure. The Lower Moncur Road is a narrow two-lane highway with many curves in some areas that are subject to flooding. Much of it borders on woodlands or farmland. Wildlife, especially deer, frequently cross it. It is unlikely to be adequate for a higher volume of traffic than it currently carries. If industrial development on the four-hundred-and-thirty-acre site would result in increased in an increased volume of traffic, the county would almost certainly need to widen and improve the Lower Moncur Road, a major infrastructure project of unknown cost. For these reasons, I believe it would be unwise for the planning board to approve the rezoning request at this time. So I am opposed to it and ask you to reject it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I thought I had to sign a sheet just to come into the meeting, so that tells you how accustomed to this kind of forum I am, so.
It's good to get out.
Since you called my name, I live at two-oh-two Farrell Road. Name is Peter Dressel. I am opposed to this development. It seems uniquely unsuitable for this particular tract or tracks being relatively unspoiled to be developed this way when there would seem to be other suitable, more suitable tracts throughout the county, especially along the major thoroughfares. I could see how the Brickyard is a great thing. Who's going to want to build anything there? So office park there is fine. However, as you can see, I'm not accustomed to these kind of speeches. Questions I would have, they discuss railroad access. I assume that means railroad spurs or railroad sidings. What will be the, you know, where will those be constructed along the rails? What will the sound, the noise impacts be on the surrounding properties? Also, is the only access off of Lower Moncur Road, all that traffic coming in from one place like that? The road certainly will need to be approved. Won't that then create pressures to establish other thoroughfares through other tracks to provide access from other roads like Farrell Road, et cetera? Things to consider, mostly, like I said, it seems like relatively unspoiled land when other land could be available. And the way I see it is that once these dominoes start to fall, the surrounding dominoes are going to start to fall as well as the incentive and the rationale for remaining surrounding properties also to go the same route as these properties will. Thank you. So I am opposed.
Thank you, sir. Cindy O'Quinn.
My name is Cindy O'Quinn and my husband and I live at thirty-three-seventy-five Lower Moncur Road. I have lived in this area my whole life and have enjoyed such wonderful childhood memories living on the farm. My father, Foster Neal, has lived in this area and on the Neal Farm his whole life. He has cattle, farmland, and timberland. The farm is registered with Ag Commissioner Steve Troxler as a century farm and has been in the Neal family for over one hundred years. I have worked for the city of Sanford for almost thirty years and most of those years preparing the budget. So I understand the appeal of additional tax dollars for our county. But please think about the people that have been here paying our taxes on the land that we love. A few tax dollars will never get back the value of our lifestyle. There is already an influx of industry in Lee County and we feel some areas of our small county, which is the smallest, I think, in the state of North Carolina, should remain residential or agricultural. As per the long-range land use plan that I think is approved by you, our area is identified as countryside, and I quote, "It seeks to protect agricultural and undeveloped land, preserving the county's agricultural heritage, to conserve and maintain rural lifestyles, and has limited residential density." Please take a minute to consider the repercussions of rezoning this area to light industry. We are concerned with traffic, noise, environmental issues, and how this could change the overall character of the area. Is this really the path you want for our area of Lee County? Help us preserve this vote, this area, and vote no for this rezoning. Thank you for your time.
David Wheeler.
David Wheeler, fifty-two-fifty-eight Lower Moncur with my son-in-law, Josh. First, I'd like to say, I hope you all know what a paradise this area is. We came from California, sorry about that. But we were looking for, I grew up in Georgia, so I knew this area too. We saw the property, we bought fifteen acres there. It's beautiful. We love the trees, we love the farm. We've got a big creek running through the property, six feet deep, twenty feet wide in spots. We take my grandchildren and we go play in the water when it's under a foot. So the creek value is really high for us. Even though it does flood once in a while, it's worth it. The other things beautiful about this area, the neighbors, I just appreciate, I don't know how many are here tonight, wonderful people. They all own farms. Our fifteen acres seems like a small property compared to what they own and what they've invested. We'd love to have more, but it's just not available. I don't know how many other people enjoy sports cars. I've got two that I drive around and this road is fantastic. This is the number one air road within fifty miles. The other one is Carolina Tiger Rescue. That's a wonderful road, too. And if you go to Fuquay, I hope I said that right, forty-two is also a wonderful road. You'd have to drive for an hour before you find other sports carty curvy roads well-kept in this area. So my concern is any industry that wants a rail is going to be a very high-volume manufacturing site. Why would they need railroad cars if they're not going to ship out box card loads worth of stuff? If you're going to make that much stuff, you also have to bring in an equivalent amount of materials. That means big trucks coming down the road, polluting the air, taking up time. Then there's the manufacturing site itself. At the very least, they've got industrial fans to purge the air in the manufacturing site, so you don't want dust explosions going on in there. Those things tend to run twenty-four hours a day. The fans can be heard for a mile away. And then there's the clanking and the noising and the machinery that they may operate as well. We lived in California across from one of these sites. They built it after we bought our home there and it was just nonstop. There was light pollution. Our neighbor was a judge, so he came in and helped us on that. They put up very bright lights. It shone into our bedrooms and lit up the night. We had that fixed. But still, the lights were there. It's light pollution. I like to go out and look at the stars. This is really a wonderful dark area. I don't know if you're accustomed to looking at stars at night in the city. You just can't see twenty percent. Here, you can see the Milky Way. We get a sight like this, they're going to have industrial lighting all day long, all night long, and you'll lose ten to fifteen percent of the stars that you can see now. I don't know if you know, but once about a week's worth of nights during a month, you can actually see the International Space Station fly over. You may not be able to see that anymore. The satellites, like astronomy, you can see a nebula too with just binoculars in this dark zone. This light pollution will take that away from anybody that's into that. And we all know if the road needs to be improved for this heavy traffic that's going to come in, that's going to be three to four years' worth of construction. The road's really long. So I'm totally opposed to this project. I'm sure there are better uses for this land. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jimmy Randolph.
My name is Jimmy Randolph. I am the, I live at thirty-four-oh-five Windmere Drive here in Sanford. I am the CEO of the Sanford Area Growth Alliance, and I came here tonight to speak to the integrity of the developers that are proposing to rezone the property on Lower Moncur Road. I came with some prepared remarks and I hope you'll bear with me. I may stray from those just a little bit. As you know, Saga is charged by the community with increasing prosperity for all of the citizens of Lee County. We do that by encouraging and facilitating the creation of new well-paid jobs and expanding the tax base through new taxable investment. Experience tells us that the most efficient way to achieve that, both the economic opportunities through new good-paying jobs for our citizens and also the expanding the tax base, is through the expansion of existing businesses or through the attraction of new businesses to Lee County. The efficient tax-based expansion achieved through large capital investments like those made recently in our community by Borat Forge, Pfizer, Astellas, and Kewa Kieran, reduce the tax burden on individual taxpayers, and the good-paying jobs these companies create offer upward economic mobility to current and future generations of Lee County citizens. The competition among communities for these new jobs and investment is fierce, and it's my job every day to compete for those on behalf of the citizens of this community. Ready industrial sites are a critical factor in that selection process. Identifying and developing ready sites is risky, costly, and time-consuming, and Saga relies on private sector partners like the Trust Well Group to assist us in that endeavor. Central Carolina Enterprise Park that we are partners in as a community and Helix Innovation Park at the Brickyard are two good examples of how effective that partnership can be. The Trust Well team has the expertise and the access to financial resources to be an effective partner, as evidenced by the success at hip at the Brickyard with the first tenant, Kewa Kieran. Thanks to the partnership that we have with Trust Well, Kewa Kieran has committed the future of their global biomanufacturing efforts to Lee County and Sanford, with an investment, as John referred to earlier, of more than five-hundred million dollars at that site and new jobs offering wages that are nearly double the current county average. In addition to other amenities being constructed at that site and proposed at the site on Lower Moncur Road, their commitment, Trust Well Group's, to environmental stewardship and sustainability was a significant factor in Kewa Kieran's appreciation for the site that they chose. Interest in industrial sites in Lee County is at all-time highs. If we're to continue to attract and retain leading employers to Lee County, we need to continue offering competitive, high-quality sites for those companies to locate on. I have never been more proud to be from Lee County than I am tonight. The folks that you're hearing from care passionately about their property and they trust you to make a good decision on behalf of everyone in Lee County for the proposal that's before you tonight. My job is economic development. On the weekends, those of you who know me, you know where you'll find me. You'll find me out in places like you can find along Lower Moncur Road. I enjoy taking pictures of native plants along the roadsides on Lower Moncur Road that are found nowhere else in Lee County and some of them nowhere else in the state. The growth is coming to Lee County as long as we in America believe in private property rights. The growth is coming to Lee County as long as we continue to offer such an amazing place to live and work and raise our families. I field phone calls every day at my office from companies that are interested in locating in Lee County, and many of them are looking on Lower Moncur Road for a site. Some of those companies are companies that are not a target industry for our county or for the city for that matter. Some of those companies I do not believe would be good tenants in an industrial park like Trust Well builds or frankly, anywhere in Lee County. I do my best as the leader of the Sanford Area Growth Alliance to communicate with those folks that are making those inquiries and to set expectations right out of the gate about whether or not I believe this would be a good fit for them and their companies. As you sit here tonight, you have some very difficult decisions ahead of you, not just tonight, but for the foreseeable future. Our state is growing, our county is growing, and it's going to continue to grow because it is such an amazing place to live and work and raise a family. I was born in Harnett County. The area where I grew up has experienced the same sorts of pressures that we face here in Lee County for folks who see that as a great place to live. The area I grew up in grew with houses. The area I grew up in grew with residential development, and many of those houses are not the highest quality and don't have the highest values. But those farms that I grew up helping with chores on, those areas I grew up fishing and swimming and hunting on, those areas are gone, and now they're large residential neighborhoods. Part of the work I do is to help our elected leaders like you and to communicate with our community and our citizens about that future growth and what makes the most sense for us in Lee County. You're faced with a very challenging decision tonight. I have confidence that you will make the right decision. I appreciate the county planning board and the role that they play in that. Regardless of the decision you make about this site, and I am in favor of the rezoning request, regardless of the decision you make about this site, the requests will keep coming. request, regardless of the decision you make about this site, the requests will keep coming and the county will continue to change, again, as long as we believe in the right of individual property owners to pursue the use of their property that they would like to pursue. So I am encouraged tonight by the turnout from the community, the participation, the eloquent communication with you all. I'm encouraged by that because we're going to face this as a county for the foreseeable future, these kinds of decisions, and this is how those decisions should be made, with input from everyone that's impacted with passion, with candor, and with good faith. Again, I'm here tonight in my role as CEO of Saga to speak on behalf of the Trustwell Group and the integrity that they represent. The work that they've done at the Helix Site has been stellar. They have delivered on every promise they've made to us as a community. I'm proud of the work we've done together. I work with Kiowa Kieran each and every day to help them get their facility up and running, and they love this place with a passion that would give you the impression they've been there their entire lives already because of the support this community has given to them in their efforts and because, again, of partners like the Trustwell Group. I hope that we will use tonight's conversation to, as an impetus, to continue this conversation, to potentially look at Plan San Lee and think about the long-term implications of having a plan that doesn't necessarily align with the amazing change we've experienced as a county over just the last four or five years, and that we will seek the input of everyone in this room and those beyond these walls as we go about that process. I think it's important that we do that if we're going to have a sound basis for making decisions like this going forward. Again, thank you for your time. I appreciate you letting me run a little long here, and I thank everyone here tonight for coming out and expressing your opinions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I believe this is Scott Wilmeth. Scott Wilmeth?
Good afternoon, Scott Wilmeth. I live on Lower Moncur Road, 3809 Lower Moncur Road, and Trustwell is looking to rezone the land up again mine, okay? I'm literally physically touching it. I would rather Trustwell be in here having this going on tonight than another company come in and put houses, four houses to the acre. And the time is said and done, 6,800 people driving up and down the road, children crawling up and down the banks of my creek. I love children, but I don't want them crawling up and down the banks of my creek because the house developed next door. So I'm in favor of Trustwell, and I have adjoining property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have three emails that I received this afternoon. I will read each one of them. The first one is Nia Freeman. Thank you for ta, her address is 397 Buchanan Farm Road. Thank you for taking the time to read this message. As a resident of the Moncur Deep River area, I am reaching out to express my heartfelt opposition to the proposed industrial zoning change at 3809 Lower Moncur Road. This rezoning poses a significant threat to our cherished community, and I kindly ask you to reconsider it for the listed reasons. The anticipated increase in noise and traffic from industrial developments is a genuine worry. In an area with very few to and from highway, excuse me, in an area with very few ways to and from the highway, the presence of heavy trucks can easily wear down our roads and cause traffic in an area that cannot effectively sustain it. This causes further questions about what changes would need to be made in order to maintain the flow of residents and industrial units through this area. The environmental implications are also deeply concerning. Industrial activities are notorious for releasing pollutants into our air, water, and soil, which can severely jeopardize our health and the natural beauty we hold dear. With a community full of children, elders, and families, we should be able to have a healthy and safe place to call home. Additionally, the impact on property values is another concern of if our community. Being in close proximity to industrial zones can render our homes less desirable, affecting our ability to sell them at a fair price. This additional financial burden is one we should have, not have to endure, at the cost of companies with little or no ties to the area. Lastly, 430 acres of industrial development will place a strain on our public services, including first responders and essential infrastructures like water, trash, and sewer systems. Our community relies on these resources to function effectively, and I can only imagine the negative impacts of such a massive complex. I kindly urge you to take these concerns into account and decline the proposed zoning change. It is imperative to prioritize the long-term well-being and health of our community by carefully evaluating the cost of industrialization against any potential economic benefits. I appreciate your attention to this matter. Thank you for your time and, excuse me, consideration. Sincerely, Nia Freeman, 397 Buchanan Farm Road. Second email I have is from, hold on, Ronald and Deborah Wall. The rezoning application, their address is, hold on. Yeah, I wrote it on the sheet here. 30, excuse me, 2794 Lower Moncur Road. The rezoning application request, 430 acres off of the Lower Moncur Road will come before the planning board and county commissioners tonight. As a resident of Lower Moncur Road, my husband and I are opposed to this rezoning request. Please recommend that this property remain residential agricultural and help us to preserve our neighborhood. Thank you, Ronald and Deborah Wall. And then I have one more, and this is the last email that I was not able to print because it came after I left. Dear Commissioners, oh, excuse me, this is Ronald or Gary Johnson, 3033 Lower Moncur Road. Dear Commissioners, please don't change the zoning of our neighborhood, Lower Moncur Road, to a light industrial. There are so many appropriate places light industrial can be zoned that are not so near to so many tomes and families. Our new road surface is so nice and the traffic is just manageable enough, so I'm not scared to go out and get my mail. I can't imagine an increase in fast cars and big trucks. Also, our new road would be destroyed with sewer and water being put in, not to mention the destruction of the forest and farmland located on the 430 acres. There seem to be so many places in Lee County that are abandoned or more appropriate for this zoning. Please don't decrease our property values by making this horrendous change. Thank you, Gary and Terrell Johnson, sent for their iPhone. As I excuse the planning board, I want to say thank you for your service. We are having a long evening. I will follow Amy's lead. For the persons, the citizens that wish to participate in observing the planning board, just be reminded you cannot make any comments or disrupt the planning board's proceedings. Thank you very much. You're more than excused. I will close the public hearing as of now. We are also going to take a 10-minute break, and Stephen, if you can put that 10-minute clock up there, please. Thank you.
I like the way you love me. Strong and wild, slow and easy, heart and soul, so completely I love the way you love I could never be without you. Strong and wild, slow and easy, heart and soul, so completely I love the way you love I smell the jasmine floating in the air like a love song. Watch my words drop sweet tears from your eyes. Now, if we could come back to order, please? Hello, we're here. All right, if we could come back to order, please? It's not often we have an unruly crowd in here.
When I see people in the grocery store, they see a Red Cross shirt and they say, "Yeah, you're the blood guy." Yep, we provide 40% of the country's blood. And Lee County's been very good about providing blood. It's not the Red Cross that needs the blood, it's the patients and the hospital. So we also have two offices on Fort Bragg, so a lot of Lee County folks take advantage of that, whether they're visiting Womack Hospital or on Fort Bragg proper. So we do a lot of stuff in the community, but we need volunteers to do the work. And so we want to encourage people to take a chance to volunteer. We're going into hurricane season. We've had Matthew in Florence. We're watching things off the coast, but our biggest disaster is a single-family home fire. And we go out in the community in the middle of the night, put our arm around somebody and say, "We're here to help." So we need volunteers to do that. I'd like to give Colby Foster, our disaster program manager, a chance to give you updated what's going on in our disaster world. But thank you for your attention tonight. We'd love to come back and talk more with you, but I know you've got a busy night. So, Colby?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
And if I stand to the side and project my voice, can everyone hear me okay? Because I'd like to try and talk to everyone. No? No, okay. Let's try this. How about this? This work?
Very good.
Perfect. So I find it important to really be invested in the American Red Cross. And while we don't have the amount of time that we were initially kind of thinking about, right, there is that slide deck that Kirk mentioned and all who attend can have access to that. I wanted to share my story with the Red Cross and what brought me to it. It was Hurricane Irene in Connecticut, where I'm from, that displaced me initially. I went to college and experienced disaster-related homelessness because of that. My family lost our home. Afterwards, we eventually got a home and everything was good. Everything was copastatic. Then we had a home fire, right back to square one, lost everything. The American Red Cross came out to my home, provided my family with a client assistance card. And what that is, is really like an American Express gift card that had funds preloaded onto it that were provided from donors in the community to allow my family to recover, get into a hotel, buy things I needed, like t-shirts, comfort items for that first 24 to 48 hours, and really expand on what those next steps were, aided in my recovery process. In Lee County, in the past year, we've served 37 families who had that same experience. And with that, we have had roughly, oof, we were just looking at it, Phil, I want to say 425 responses just like that in the surrounding area that we have served. And when I'm saying "we," I'm talking about 104 disaster-related volunteers, three of which live in Lee County. So please, if you have the availability, if you know of someone that has an interest, raise your hand to volunteer. You have the lovely privilege of working with me and I'm a lot of fun. Phil's a lot of fun, too. And we're not just located in Fayetteville or Raleigh. We come here. We're coming to the county. Whether that be for service delivery or attending local meetings, that's where I had the honor of meeting Kirk and getting invited to speak with you tonight. So Death talks about our disaster action team and our fire response stuff that Phil mentioned. But I've got some handouts and those of you at the table have a copy of these, but for those in attendance, there's also some out on the table out front. Fun fact, we provide free smoke alarms. Red Cross volunteers will go install them. And we have a partnership with the city of Sanford who will also install those donated alarms from the American Red Cross. If you're interested, there's a QR code. Go ahead and scan that, or you can call 1-800-RED-CROSS to get that information on how to do so. Preparedness opportunities. We offer several different preparedness programs, whether you are a community leader, a school member. If you're looking for preparedness opportunities to talk about that mitigation, how do we prevent things from happening? Take a look. The flyer's out front, but everything from kindergarten to second grade, again, hands-only CPR, be Red Cross ready, community preparedness for all ages. And then again, we have our disaster action team information, which is out at the front, talks about our home fire response and how to call to receive services. Lastly, as Phil mentioned, hurricane season. It is active right now. I was practically crying thinking about Aaron coming and hitting us. So grateful it's not, but there's two other storms that are coming off the coast of Africa that could potentially come and impact us. Hurricane season ends November 1st, so please be mindful of that and know that the disaster threat is only growing, it's not stopping. So with that, again, thank you. There's opportunities to join us and Phil?
So these are the minutes from 1918. I just pulled the archives. So in 1918, we had 1,000 volunteers from Lee County. I want to add you to that role right now. So if you get a chance to help us, whether it's running a shelter, going to a home fire, installing the smoke alarms, we need you. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Colby. Mr. Phillips. Okay. All right. My word. The Jonesboro Sash and Blind Company. Thank you. Next item on the agenda are public comments. Just a reminder, Stephen will put the clock up on the screen. You have three minutes to speak. When you come forward, please state your name as well as your address. First name on the public comments is Chad Spivey.
All right, Chad Spivey, 2006 Lord Ashley Drive. I think everybody has steak dinner tonight. Thanks for staying with us. All right, imagine that your favorite baseball franchise has never been to a World Series baseball game, and all of a sudden you find yourself put together a World Series caliber team. And that team ends up in the ninth inning of a baseball game and it's tied up. And you've got Joseph Kill on third base and I'm on first base. I'm on, I mean, I'm batting. Got Coach Sharp over here at first and Coach Smith over there at third. I hit a line drive down the right field line and I'm taking off the first, running as fast as I can to get to base. And as soon as I get there, Coach Sharp is waving me on. He's going, "Come on, let's go, let's go, let's go." And I'm running just as hard as I can and I turn back and I look and I see Joseph Kill crossing home plate with a comprehensive master plan with public input from all the citizens of this county that care about parks. And it shows the top three things that we want are hiking trails, nature trails, and Blue Ways. And so I get close to second, I look down at Coach Smith down on third base waving me, "Come on, come on." Hadn't picked the ball up yet. I get close to third base and as I'm getting ready to round the base, Coach Smith is holding up a letter of intent, a letter of interest that came through the Parks and Rec Board that went to your board that you guys signed to give us the authority to go after this park, to save it for the public. And he's, Coach Smith is saying, "Let's go, bud, let's go score, let's get this thing home." So I take off home, I'm running so fast, my helmet's about to fall off, my shoes are about to come untied. And right before I get to home plate, I'm getting ready to dive and the crowd's going crazy and everybody gets silent, right? And out of nowhere, our teammate runs up that was on deck and steals home plate and runs off the field and doesn't say a single word to us. And when the dust settles, I'm sitting there at home plate tagged out because all of a sudden, all this hard work to get to the World Series is over. And that's what happened the other night. We've been working on this for five years and you guys gave us the authority and this is what the community wanted. We don't get paid a dime to do this. We do it because we love it, we love Sanford and we love Lee County, we want it to be the best place in the world. And nobody cares what our names are 100 years from now, they're not going to know what we did, but they will know somebody in the future, possibly your great-great-grandkid, is going to be walking out there at the indoor park and they're going to be seeking refuge from this crazy, busy, congested world that we live in. And they're being given thanks to God that somebody had the guts to make the right decision to save 426 acres from development to let us legally access this property, not illegally, but legally, so we can have some peace of mind and have some quietness. The big machine from Raleigh is slowly grinding its way down US 1 and all we're seeing is 500 houses, 750 houses, and 1,000 houses here and there. And all our beautiful farmlands and all our beautiful, you've been hearing this all night, all our beautiful rolling hills is slowly going away. And you have a chance to do the right thing and help us save a little bit of land for our great-great-grandkids. And not only save some land, they'll be able to learn a little bit about Lee County history, too. And we're proud, we're proud of where we're from and we're tired of kicking the ball down the road. This has been going on for five decades. And with you guys on our team, we can make it happen. So I just come here tonight hoping that you guys will make a motion and vote to allow us to continue to pursue the indoor iron property because we can't stop the growth. But together with you on our World Series team, we can shape the future. Thank you very much, your humble servant, Chad Burden Joseph Spivey. I appreciate it.
Coach Smith will be calling you later. Noah, you can pull the mic down. Chad had it up in the air there. Sure. Name and your address, please.
I'm Noah McLean. I'm from 501 McKee Street. I'm just saying, I feel like we should keep parks because I've been going to the park my whole life. Park, the park bring me peace. I used to go with Chad Spivey hiking, canoeing, paddling to the park. And I feel like people should have peace, more, enjoy more, enjoy more life. And we shouldn't take away the parks or none of that stuff. I have a, I have a son, so I feel like when my son get older, he gonna be able to go to the park, go canoeing, go do stuff that's like, that make people keep, to keep people out of trouble. There's a lot of stuff going on in the world and we just want peace, no problems, no houses taken away. That's really all.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Mary Joan Pugh. Did I get that right?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Mary Joan Pugh. I live at 668 Maple Avenue in Ashburn, North Carolina. I'm here as the coordinator of the Deep River State Trail. It's a 125-mile trail, goes from High Point City Lake in Guilford to Randolph to Moore to Chatham and Lee and ends at Moncur where it joins the Hall River to form the Cape Fear. And we're the third state trail, there are 15 now, established in 2007. We have a master plan and an easement from the state for indoor iron furnace is in the master plan and it's also in our five-year plan for 2025. I have 40 years in state and local government in North Carolina. I retired from the North Carolina Zoo and I started working on the Deep River State Trail to get trails done. And I can tell you, I can testify, that the hardest step is the first step and that's acquisition, getting those easements. And that is crucial. I'm giving you an example, in Franklinville in Randolph County, they've had an easement on a stretch that's two miles of land trail. They've had it for 20 years. And when the legislature gave money for state trails, the Deep River State Trails allocation of 861,000 went to that project. And we're just now finishing a bridge, the first phase. So you've got to have the land, even if you have to hang on to it for 20 years, to, you know, get the funding. I, the indoor iron furnace is almost there. It's almost there, 25%. This is so hard to get state property, easements on state property. You have to go through state historic sites, you have to go through the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, you have to go through state property. And it's now on the agenda for the Council of State, which is the one who approves all state property acquisitions and dispositions. I encourage you to accept this easement from the state and I pledge to do my very best to get funding for river access at, at, at the indoor iron furnace and any funding for the park. But the first step is that first step is the acquisition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ilia Smirnov, 100 South Main Street in Lillington. I'm here to express my support for continued development of the indoor furnace park. I have been in the recreational business for the last 13 years. I own and operate Cape Fear River Adventures in Lillington. I also own and operate indoor paddle here in Sanford on the Deep River. And I have been doing that for the last nine years. I have accommodated around 200,000 people with the River Adventures over my course of my work. And recently, we have done some analysis of the, our data and we wanted to know where the people coming from and what are our demographics. And what we have learned is that on any given weekend, we have folks coming anywhere as far as Wilmington and Charlotte to come spend a day on the river with us. We have also learned that top three demographics of our customers is coming from Charlotte. We have learned that people are eager to get in the car, drive a couple hours away, and spend some time with us on the river. Those same folks who come in our area also spend their money and time in our local restaurants, our gas stations, and our hotels. They bring actively financial impact, positive financial impact on our communities and our local economies. I think some of that information highlights that when we're investing and we choose to invest in our natural resources and our parks today, that the net outcome is going to be positive long-term. I would encourage the board to support this future development and to see this park come in fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Edwin Patterson, 2575 Senator Road. I'm here to speak in support of the indoor site acquisition. I've served on the Railroad House Board of Directors for 35 years. During that period, Railroad House has a record of some 25 tours to various historical sites in Lee and surrounding counties. I say this to emphasize Railroad House involvement in the county's historic interest. Two, I'm proud to say that I've conducted 15 of those tours and that two of them were to the indoor furnace site and drew large crowds. The state acquired the lease on the property over 20 years ago and as far as I know, spent none of its money on the project. During that time, the Railroad House raised over $350,000 locally that was spent on a thorough archaeological survey of the site and stabilization of the furnace with a metal cover and local vegetation cleanup. I want you and the other commissioners to know that this is not some minor site to be ignored. It is an historic icon representing the rich history of Lee County for which Railroad House... They bring actively financial impact, positive financial impact on our communities and our I think some of that information highlights that when we investing and we choose to invest in our natural resources and our parks today, that the net outcome is going to be positive long-term. I would encourage the board to support this future development and to see this park come in fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Edwin Patterson, 2575 Senator Road. I'm here to speak in support of the indoor site acquisition. I've served on the Railroad House Board of Directors for 35 years. During that period, Railroad House has a record of some 25 tours to various historical sites in Lee and surrounding counties. I say this to emphasize Railroad House involvement in the county's historic interest. I'm proud to say that I've conducted 15 of those tours, and that two of them were to the indoor furnace site and drew large crowds. The state acquired the lease on the property over 20 years ago, and as far as I know, spent none of its money on the project. During that time, the Railroad House raised over $350,000 locally that was spent on a thorough archaeological survey of the site and stabilization of the furnace with a metal cover and local vegetation cleanup. I want you and the other commissioners to know that this is not some minor site to be ignored. It is an historic icon representing the rich history of Lee County for which Railroad House proudly supports. For years, the main street through Sanford, now known as Horner Boulevard, was known as Indoor Street. To throw this site away to housing or industrial development is unconscionable. This is your chance, as county commissioners, to step up and do the right thing and save indoor. It won't cost you anything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, county commissioners and citizens. My name's Bill Murphy, 1802 Tomberlin Road, Sanford here. I want to talk not only about Endor, but parks in general, but more about what it's going to take. It's going to take vision and execution to get it done. And what do we need to have a vision on? What do we need to execute? In 2018, we passed the plan sadly. Well, that was great, but in 2019, everything changed. Ask Jimmy Randolph, okay? With the, all of a sudden, Lee County went to number one in the state in economic development, okay? Ahead of Wake County, ahead of Mecklenburg County that year, and it just, we set all kinds of records, attracted new industry, and developers started to find us. Prior to that, we were chasing developers and industry. Now, the 20 years prior to 2019, we would have 100 acres a year annexed into the city. Now we're talking about 500 acres a year in the last five years. Since 2019, 9,700 single-family lots have been approved for construction, plus 4,000 apartments units have been approved, okay, in those five years. Now, that's a total of 13,000, but only 2,000 to 3,000 have been built or are under construction. That leaves a big gap between what we've approved and what growth is coming to us. And if I take that, that number, it comes down to 1,100, 11,000 that have been approved that haven't been built yet. Well, that 11,000 could easily represent 25,000 to 30,000 new residents to our county that'll be coming over. And it takes a while to build those things, but coming over the next five years. But our park system has to be looking five years ahead, as do our schools, our retail, et cetera. But our parks need to be looking five years ahead and working on it now. How long did it take to build the Lee County Athletic Park, okay? Great facility, about ready to open. But boy, that, that concept, that vision started five, six, seven years ago, and that's what we need to be looking at. What are we looking at for when we're a county that's larger by 20,000 or 30,000 people?
Your time, sir.
Okay, that's good. But it's your responsibility to, to look at what needs to be done long-term. Your responsibility isn't that you bought a laptop here or you bought a backhoe there. It's to take care of the long-term vision for Lee County. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Just a reminder, you have three minutes. Clock's on the wall.
Thank you. This, I am Tamara Lewis, and our family lives at 418 Arlington Circle, and that is the west side of the county where we work, volunteer, and recreate throughout the county. And often, we have to drive out of county for our outdoor experiences. And so in order to be brief, in my support of the indoor iron furnace property being considered for a park area, I would like to just present my thoughts as a checklist. Here are the items that that property could check off. Being available to youth, like our scouts, who especially need to be in a place in nature. A low-cost activity that is available to all citizens. Access to hiking, check. Biking, check. Voters, check. Nature and green space, check. Preserves and reinforces the area's history. It would be the natural follow-through of the county's comprehensive master plan, so we're checking that off after we've invested in that. It honors the investment of folks who have seen the potential of this area for decades and laid the foundation for this work. It preserves a very rare, large parcel of undeveloped land. There isn't, we can't say, oh, there's another place in Sanford, you know, that this could be. It is preserving a historical treasure. It adds resources for local community health and well-being, and might I add, joy. There's a lot of calculations going on. There's a little bit of area where we can remember to bring joy. It can be a destination for people from out of county. It can be an attractive amenity for people considering to move here, as well as for the folks who are already here, and it has the potential to link with a network of trails and waterways across the state. I'd like to just end with a story. Not too long ago, we spent the night at Cumberland Gap. Breakfast was going to be served at 9:00 a.m. sharp, so even though it was lightly raining, 8 o'clock a.m., saw our son and me huffing along the trail, thinking, how cool is it that this park is so close to where we're staying? We can walk to it and do a morning hike. I didn't know until we turned a corner that they also happened to have an iron furnace as part of that park, but I remember thinking, we could be like this someday in Lee County. We could have a local park that you could visit and be back in time for breakfast.
Good evening. I am speaking in support of the indoor iron furnace.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Donna Strickland, 1708 Woodridge Drive. Put me back at the root now. Okay, I am speaking in support of the indoor iron furnace park project. I would like to read a couple of verses from a song made famous by Joni Mitchell in 1970, "Big Yellow Taxi." They took all the trees and put them in a tree museum, and they charged the people a dollar and a half just to see them. Don't it always seem to go that you don't know what you've got till it's gone? They paved paradise and put in a parking lot. There are people who have been working hard for years to save this scenic and historic region of Lee County. There are grants available to make the dream of the indoor iron furnace park a reality. These monies may not be available next year, so we must apply now. To apply, we need your help. We need your approval. We need your involvement. Please don't let this opportunity slip through your fingers. Be Teddy Roosevelt. Be Ansel Adams. Two men instrumental in establishing our park system in the United States. Be the hero for future Lee County citizens and save this beautiful region of Lee County. Don't be the "they" in the verse. They paved paradise and put in a parking lot. I encourage you to vote to approve support for the indoor iron furnace park. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Debbie Hall, 957 Cumknock Road, Sanford, North Carolina. And I'm here to also support the indoor furnace project. Most all of us here are here to support that project. As a member of Deep River Park, we love parks and open spaces. We especially love that great river, the Deep River. We clean up litter. We mow grass. We put down gravel. We hold events, which some of you have been to. And we fundraise. And we use our own money, because we think open spaces are that important. We believe they're that important to us. Open spaces, being in open spaces boosts our immune system. It helps our cognitive health, heart function. It reduces stress. If you don't believe that, the stress part, come and sit on the Deep River at the Camelback Bridge sometime, and you'll see. It does. That water going by reduces stress. And the indoor project is on that beautiful river. I'm here to ask you to support that project, to help us begin to save the indoor furnace and make that a park that everyone can enjoy.
Thank you. Keely Perz? She went into the, okay, planning board.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Deegan from 957 Cumknock Road, and I'm encouraged to see the indoor project back on the agenda. I also thank you, Chairman, for responding to my email. And the reason you cited was money. And we all know that the answer to most things is money. And the question here is what we want, or what do we want our community to look like? And are we willing to come off the hip to pay for it? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I apologize, John, but I don't know if you wrote Dan or Owen.
He knows.
Oh, John.
John Cotton Dean, 509 Sunset Drive, here in Sanford. First, I can't add much to what's already been eloquently said before me coming today, but I just want to thank everybody, all the commissioners, for giving us the opportunity to just share our passion and excitement for expanding parks and open space here in Lee County. I think indoor furnace obviously strikes a chord for all of us as a gem in Lee County. So again, thank you for that. And as a member of the City of Sanford's Parks Commission, as well as a board member of the Back to Dirt Conservancy, I encourage this body to move forward in developing the indoor furnace site as a recreational natural asset here in Lee County for the future. And I think just as importantly, moving forward and continuing to partner with the diverse, unique community organizations here in Lee County to identify new opportunities to expand and improve our existing parks and open spaces for both recreational use, as well as preserving the natural assets for the future of Lee County. So again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, John. Your last name looked like three letters.
Good evening. I'm Travis Hartman, 117 Tower Ridge Lane, here in Sanford. Let's go and start the clock. Awesome. Thank you. So what haven't we hit on? We've hit on recreation space. We've hit on time invested, seeing what we can be able to do with the indoor project. So yes, I am supporting it and encouraging it to go forward. We talked about investing in our future. Well, what happens if we don't look forward properly? Well, maybe we say, you know what, I could buy this office building, and instead some developer in Florida buys it. And then I realize, wait, I need that space. And $2 million more later leaves our community to go support something else. So we could get, we can find money later, but it's going to be more money. So small investments now, that's what's going to bring greater benefit in the future. As we look at all the developers, it's been mentioned, how many new houses, how much new construction is happening. People need places to be able to go out and have recreation. And if we wait three years down the road, four years down the road, five years down the road, it's going to be much more expensive than it would be today. So I encourage you, let's invest now, take advantage of time, and be able to get the benefits sooner for more people. And oh, if you are looking at where we need to come up with more money, maybe the next time there's developers coming in, rather than putting the pressure on them, saying, hey, you know what, you need to contribute to the parks, you need to contribute to these things, because it's not just a place for you to go sleep, it's for people to be part of the community, to be able to do things with all the great folks that are here in the room. Thank you.
Dan Luft? Derek Burrell? I hope I, or is it Derek Bussell? You're up there with John. He had three letters for a four-letter last name.
It's Burrell.
Burrell, thank you.
No, Burrell.
Burrell, got it.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Derek Burrell, and I live at 2626 Wellington Drive here in Sanford. And I'm one of the founding members of Back to Dirt Conservancy, who I'm here representing this evening. An organization that is dedicated to preserving and creating our natural recreational spaces in Lee County and the surrounding areas. I'm speaking to you this evening to strongly urge you to move forward with the lease agreement for the 426-acre indoor iron furnace river park. Over the past five-plus years, state and county officials, community leaders, and volunteers have worked collaboratively to bring this vision nearly to completion. We're approximately 95% complete, and final plans are headed to Governor Stein's office next month. Walking away now would squander years of momentum, the $65,000 already invested in public engaged planning and countless volunteer hours. But this park, it's not about politics. It's about the people. It's about the people that live here in Lee County. Our community has voiced a clear vision. Nature trails, biking trails, a blue way, hiking paths, and a welcoming space where families can connect with the outdoors. Approving this lease allows us to apply for critical funding, including year-of-the-trail grants, and begin construction and stewardship immediately. But the benefits, they go well beyond recreation. Number one, parks generate real dollars. And I know that's, I know that's really important to all the people in this room. Nationwide, every $1 million invested in parks can yield roughly $10 million in sales, $4 million in labor income, and $7 million in GDP. It's going to give our local businesses a boost. The Four Mile Creek Greenway in Matthews, North Carolina, drives around 3.1 million in annual business sales. Property values also will rise. Homes near Greenways in Charlotte gained an average of $3,200 in value. But then there's the power of tourism. North Carolina state parks deliver, they deliver a substantial economic boost. A 2008 study focused on just 14 parks and estimated that $124 million in annual sales, $46 million in income for residents, and over 2,100 full-time jobs generated from tourist spending. If we can, if we can, if we can sort of concertively assume Endor could bring in even a fraction of that impact over time, the economic case becomes undeniable. As Lee County grows, like the Vector Innovation Park proposed tonight, amenities like Endor and other, and our new athletic park are 100% essential. They entice people to live, play, and invest here in Lee County, rather than our other neighboring counties such as Chatham, Harnett, or Johnston, which are actively building such amenities and investing in their residents. If we don't keep pace, we risk seeing families and tax dollars depart to other counties. I myself drive to other counties such as Wake Gardens, Chatham, and Harnett for recreation, because we don't have the sufficient facilities here to meet my needs. Indoor Iron Furnace River Park can be a defining legacy for Lee County. It preserves green space, protects our history, boosts tourism, and offers everyone a place to hike, bike, fish, paddle, and learn. I respectfully, respectfully request that you honor the extensive planning, the public process, and the community's trust by approving the lease agreement and letting this vital project proceed. Let's seize this chance to create something lasting for Lee County. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman. I'm Bob Bridwell, 2321 Noelwood Drive, Sanford. When I was listening to some of the speakers, I was going back in my memory because that's what old men do. And I was thinking of over 15 years ago, and probably longer than that, when Edwin Patterson, who was one of your previous speakers, was interviewed by Scott Mason on the, on that WRAL documentary of Tar Heel Traveler. And while he was being interviewed by Scott Mason at the indoor iron furnace, my good friend, my, my great friend, Worth Pickard, and I were sitting on a rock, being televised the whole time. And I think about that when I, when I, every time that I, we talk about indoor iron furnace. And when I came here in 2002 as the county planning director, one of the first people to walk through my door was this little squat guy about this wide in a, in a, in a pair of coveralls named Worth Pickard. And Worth was from, from the Railroad House Museum, wanted to make sure that I supported the, the, the saving of the indoor iron furnace. And that was in 2002. So that project that they keep referencing has been going on a very, very long time, largely through the support of the Railroad House Museum, but also a good many others. And over the years, John Payne came in, your previous recreation director. And John and Don Kavaskas and I sat down for a couple of days and sat there with a county map, laying out what we thought would be a great idea for the recreational facilities and open space for Lee County. John needed that because he was trying to apply for a part-of-grant to get funds to come in to fund recreation programs. So we, we put that plan together and it had two primary features. One was the indoor iron furnace, sitting on the banks of the Deep River. And the second was a indoor iron furnace greenway, 26.4 miles connecting Sanford through all areas of northern Lee County. And those were the primary elements of that first Lee County open space and recreation plan. That goes back a good many years. Then the other thing that came to my mind is the last meeting that I appeared before this body as the planning director. And that was to ask your support for $1 to lease the indoor iron furnace from the state of North Carolina. So it's been a long time coming, a lot of commitment, a lot of sacrifice, and a lot of activities. And I urge, and I urge very strongly your support that this project can move forward. Thank you very much and God bless you.
Thank you, sir. That, that ends our public comments. I just want to commend everyone for staying this long, pushing fervently with your desires, and we appreciate that very much. Next item on the agenda is the indoor iron furnace, and Coach Smith is calling Chad Spivey Unfortunately, when this came before us at our last meeting, we had a very, very, very long meeting, and it seems like the same tonight. And that being said, I believe that the issue was to move forward without taking any actions. So pick up where we left off.
Move forward without any action. Well, I thought I was about to get benched, so I appreciate that.
That was our last meeting, our workshop.
Yeah. The, the last workshop, I mean, Joe and I went there to give you guys some information. And I had a corrugated sign that had the park conceptual plan on there, and we wanted to tell you where we, where we've been and where we're going. And really, we weren't expecting a vote or a motion at all. We just wanted to celebrate with you guys and let you know that the hard work is done, getting all the state relationships in place and getting this to the Council of State and Government Ops, which I've always been told is the hardest thing you can do on a project like this. And it's, it's done. And we wanted to celebrate with you guys because you guys can help us deliver this to the citizens, and it really lies in what you allow us to do. So we were looking for a motion tonight from somebody on the board, hopefully to allow us to proceed with the process of pursuing the lease agreement for the indoor iron works property. So when the time is right, we can get a master plan created to give you guys factual numbers and information, including a lease agreement that you guys will be able to partake in, creating the language. So we're not signing up for anything that we don't agree, we, anything we don't agree with, anything that we don't want to participate in. And that process in itself could take six months to a year because it's going to be a lot of back and forth.
So Chad, you're saying you don't have the lease agreement in writing yet?
There is no lease agreement. There is a base template, and the way this works is, this is a very special property. There's not a lot of leases that have been done like this with the state due to the historic preservation designation on the property. So basically, it's going to be between our attorney and the state-assigned attorney, and they will give us what they think should be our duties and responsibilities to create this lease agreement. And we have the right to strike through any verbiage that we don't agree with and send it back to them. And back and forth we go until this long, drawn-out lease agreement process, which I feel is going to be, will be completed. And then once that's done, we have a huge win for the citizens here, and we have this thing locked in for 25 years. And unfortunately, we cannot give you numbers of the actual cost of a park like this without being a managing member and having access to go out and get a comprehensive, site-specific master plan that will give you those numbers. And at that time, depending on where we're at with our tax base, our funding, and all the other projects going on in the county, I believe that that would be a great time to vote yea or nay. But if we have the lease agreement in place, then it does allow us to go after year of the trail funding, part-of-grants, community sponsorships, and all types of other means to raise money. I've done, this is, I've done four projects, I believe, with the state and the county. And so far, we've gotten all the funding from the state, and all we've had to do was approve a maintenance agreement. And the maintenance agreement ends up pretty much being mowing some grass because we go out and shovel mud and do all the work ourselves. And so I really think we can do this at a very low cost, other than a park attendant or two down the road and some maintenance. So at this time, I don't want to get the county tied up in spending money. I know we're stretched, our dimes are stretched, we're building libraries, jails, athletic parks, and all kinds of other stuff. But now is not the time to stop the process. We're at the very end of this thing, and it's been a, it's been a mountain to climb. And when we get there, I want to be able to plant a flag on top of it with you and give some to these folks sitting behind us and everybody else out here. So we would love to have a motion tonight.
Yeah, I, I think we're all happy to revisit this and hear from you again. By moving forward with a lease review, we're in no way obligating county funds for undesignated projects. But I would like to put forth a motion to move forward with legal review on, on the lease for indoor park.
Once you have it. Pardon? Once they have it.
Well, we're, but we're going to re, we're going to move forward with the review of that, correct? In the terms?
I was going to make a suggestion. Maybe the motion could be to ask legal to request a copy of the lease from the state to review.
Right.
And then report back to the board and continue to investigate the project.
So I have a motion to move forward to ask legal to review the state lease agreement?
To receive a copy of the lease, because I have to name and review the copy of the lease. To request a copy. Of the lease and review.
Just so you know, the lease is not yet drafted.
That's why I asked. He doesn't have, they don't have.
Not even drafted.
It will not, yeah. Until it goes through Government Ops and City, and Council of State, then they will use a template to draft us a specific lease that we will be able to negotiate with.
All right.
So the motion?
Is there anything else you need in the lease? I mean, uh, in the motion? Is there anything else you need in the motion that you can think?
I would prefer a motion that this basically allows us to continue the pursuit of the indoor iron property and lease agreement, including a site-specific master plan to give you guys every set of, every bit of, single piece of information you could use to decide to move forward once this is finished.
The site-specific master plan with the tie-in funds, so I don't know that you want to include that in your motion tonight.
The master plan would come after the lease agreement, but to avoid redundancy and coming here again for another motion after the lease agreement is completed, which you guys are totally a part of, we would be able to pursue that master plan. So you guys will have the numbers in front of you and see what we're really asking for.
I think we'd like to stay as involved as we can in the process so that we don't have these gaps of understanding that seemed to happen at least on, you know, at the last meeting. So I'd like to put forth the motion to get a copy of the lease so that we can move forward with, or, sorry, to, to be involved in the research of, and, and move forward with the lease, but not move into a master plan at this time. You need that said more clearly, Kirk.
I'm trying to put, okay. We're asking for, to request from the state. All right, requesting from the state. Now, what documents are we asking for, Madam?
I think at this time, just the lease.
The next step, after it goes to Government Ops next month, it will be the lease that comes next.
And then we'll review it, and then we would need to bring it back to the board for a vote to make sure of the terms.
No, no, you won't review it at that time. You will review it.
Sure.
And then you will be able to amend it because there's going to be some things in this grease, this lease agreement that we're not going to want to do.
Correct. And, but eventually, we'll have to bring the final lease to the board for final review.
That's right.
I think that this motion would just allow us to continue.
Continue the process of creating that lease agreement so we can eventually bring it to you guys. And this isn't going to happen in three months. It's, it's, these projects take forever, and it's just allow us to continue doing what we've been doing. There's a lot of boxes that need to be checked.
And, and just for clarification, we're going to ask, request the state, you've mentioned templates. They have templates for these agreements?
The deputy director for NCDCR said that he does have a template, and he also mentioned that due to the rarity of a property like this, that they would draft information from that to help create the copy that they will send us to start working through the negotiation process. So that has not been done yet because it's got to go through Government Ops next month.
All right. So the motion is to ask this, to request the state template for legal to review on the indoor iron furnace property? Get that, Madam Clerk? Any other questions, Commissioner Martin?
No, I just want to reiterate that, that we do want to be involved in the process and, and work with you on that, just so that we all understand what everybody wants and move in that same direction of protecting the furnace and creating the park.
I think that has to be a part of the motion, otherwise they may not have a template. I'm just saying, if they don't have a template at the time we make our request, we ought to make it clear that we want to continue the process.
That's right. Yeah.
I believe that's the intent. We have to get legal involved.
I think that's it. We just want to, the motion just basically is to move ahead with the lease process.
Correct.
That's right.
Because that involves negotiation and everything. And then the final lease would have to come back to the board for approval. So I think we just want, the motion just needs to be to proceed with the lease process.
That's exactly right.
Is that simple enough?
Simple enough.
Does that work for you?
Less is more.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, how did you interpret what the manager just said?
To move forward with the lease process.
Too easy.
Boy, that was easier than, yeah.
We're good. I tried.
Thank you. Commissioner Lovick, would you like to confuse the issue anymore?
No, sir, I am good. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Yeah, the other thing, you know, this, I think, I think we went some, down some rabbit holes at our last meeting. I think that's what got us a lot confused. So, you know, as time goes on, maybe come back and give us another presentation, tell us where we are, and things of this nature. So, yeah, we all have, I guess, a better idea and sense of the, of the project as a whole. Yeah, you know what I mean?
100%.
I think that's, I think that's where we got, well, we all got confused, but.
Yeah, the last meeting, we just discussed carbon tanning when indoor came up. We haven't talked about that at all, and then it just got tabled. And I know we were all tired, three hours, hungry and all that.
And we're working on another record tonight.
Thanks. Moving to approve.
Commissioner Vorbik supposedly told me that she would be here after her volleyball game. She must have won, and they're celebrating. So Commissioner Reeves, anything?
Yes, I want to comment on what, what was last said. This process has to include Mr. Spivey and the board, your recreation board, as we assess what type of lease agreement they are preparing to offer us, because he knows the ins and outs of what we should be looking for and shouldn't accept. So it's almost like when the attorney gets it and reviews it, then he gets a chance to do the same thing, he and his board get to do the same thing. That's it.
Commissioner Sharp?
No questions.
Okay. I have a question. Not, not a question, just a statement, in fact. When we get our packets and we have the, excuse me, the manager's monthly report, there's always parks and recreation, your commission's notes in there. And I try to review them on a regular basis. This was nowhere mentioned in many of the minutes, and I'm just curious how much your board has been promoting it within your board and annotating in the minutes. Because this really caught me off guard.
Yeah. And it actually caught us off guard because I didn't realize we were going to be talking about indoor the other night. We were coming for the Carbington property, but the board has been involved in the process. We've showed him, we've, we've voted and talked and made motions to proceed with the conceptual master plan that we created, to even get the state to allow this process to proceed. We're not engineers. Our conceptual plans hold no weight at all in a project like this. But it was what was requested of us, and we took to the parks board. Once that was done, I mean, that might have been over two years ago, a year ago, we've just been going to meeting after meeting, negotiating moving lines three or four feet from archaeological sites on this property. And none of that, we'd have no weight in that because we are not engineers. So essentially, it was a very meticulous and tedious meeting process. But the board from the park side has been on board and approved, and shown approval the whole process, the whole way through, our, every step of the way until now. We just haven't had much to give them because it's been a lot of stuff with Joseph and I just sitting there listening and saying yes and thank you and trying to get to this lease agreement part. And this is the next thing that we would bring up with the parks board, and obviously it's going to land in Whitney's hands to, to, for the legal legality aspect of the lease agreement. Then we'd share it with you guys, and you guys would say, read it through, you know, mark through what you don't like, give recommendations. And if you have any concerns about this property, now would be the time to come up with all your questions and concerns on the front end. So when we go back to Chuck LaClant, the deputy director of the NCDCR, who's been spearheading this for us, we can make sure they know what we're, what our concerns are before they even start drafting the lease agreement. That way, they can go ahead and do that on the front end, and it'll cut some of that back and forth out of the way. So if you're, if you're worried about the archaeological stuff, you know, let us know right now so we can go ahead and let them know before they even start drafting this lease.
We'll leave that with legal. All right, we have the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
We really appreciate this. I love and respect each and every one of you. I know you guys have the hardest job in the world, and you volunteer for it. It's not easy to sit here and make decisions that impact people's lives, but I'm greatly thankful that you guys are giving us the opportunity to continue this process. It means more than you would know to all of us back here in this county. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
What about the land across the river in Chatham? Is there still talk with them about combining? Or has that totally ended? You know, across the river?
I can't hardly, hardly hear you.
Across the river, you said you're going to combine that land. Is that still talk? Are they still talking about that?
So right across the river from indoor, they're actually, the states bought some land way down the river, 1,500 acres from US-1 up to the confluence of the Rocky River. And they're going to develop nature trails and hiking trails there, and they're going to coincide that with a white. they're going to coincide that with the White Pines, but across from the indoor property right now, I'm not aware of anything that's for sale.
Well, I thought you said that there was talk about, they have a park over there, combining the parks.
Combining the parks, oh, the DRST trail.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a state trail steering committee that we're on that's supposed to interconnect all these things from basically the zoo down to Lee County, and they're going to connect it through these pocket trails. And, uh.
That's still a possibility, maybe? That may still be a possibility?
Yeah, that's going to be a possibility, but this is the key piece. And until this is done, we can't really take anything somewhere, so.
Okay.
But yeah, love you guys, thank you guys.
Thank you, Chad. Drive safely, wear your seatbelts, no speeding. Next item on the agenda is opioid litigation action items. We have three votes we have to conduct.
Yes, and you can, and I'll.
Move your, move your mic.
Can, oh yeah, you can hear me now. You can do those all in one. Um, I'm asking for, um, approval of the resolution authorizing the execution of the opioid settlement, um, approve the third supplemental agreement for additional funds between the state of North Carolina and local governments, and then approve the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy and authorize the county manager chair and attorney to sign any and all documents necessary for all three of the approvals. Um, so this is all stemming from the opioid settlement agreement that the Board of Commissioners approved back in 2021 with the state of North Carolina, and it, um, as you all are aware, it tells us how we will be able to utilize and spend those funds. Um, at this time, the board is being asked to approve, there's a third round of supplemental agreement for, um, the secondary opioid manufacturers, and then also, um, we are asking for approval of the bankruptcy plan for, for the Purdue Pharma and the Slacker families. There is a timeframe to have all of this information, um, approved and authorized by the end of September and the first part of October. And I did want to note for the board that out of estimates from the supplemental settlement for the, with the manufacturers, the county is expected to receive around a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, and from the Purdue Pharmacy bankruptcy plan, the county will be expected to receive around eight hundred and seven thousand. Um, all will have to be spent according to the MOA. Um, so just asking for a motion to approve all three items and granting the chair, the manager, and attorney to sign all documents related to these approvals.
Questions for Whitney, Commissioner Sharp?
No questions.
Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Lovick? Commissioner Martin? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing execution of opioid settlements with secondary opioid manufacturers, Purdue Pharma and Slacker Family, and approve the third supplemental agreement for additional funds between the state of North Carolina and local governments, and approve the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy plan and authorize county manager, chair, and attorney to sign any and all documents necessary for these three approvals?
Well read, Kirk, motion to approve.
Motion's been made. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you. New business. Approval of grant-related documents for the Lee County CBPG 2024 Neighborhood Revitalization Project number 23 dash C dash 4168. Karen Kennedy, I thought you were earlier on my schedule. And, ah, she brings the young man in, okay. Trudell? Good to see you, sir.
I was about to say good afternoon, but good evening. Chairman Smith and members of the board, I see that I was sadly mistaken in thinking that all of these people were here for the CBPG project. Sanford Lee County Community Development is seeking or requesting approval of grant-related documents for the Lee County CBPG 2024 Neighborhood Revitalization Project. Contract for services were awarded to Insight Consulting Group. I have with me Chris Hilbert from Insight, the project manager, but he will provide an overview of the program manual and overview of the grant, uh, and we are here to answer any questions you may have. And so, Chris, if you will come up.
Thank you for your patience, Chris. I'm not quite sure if you've ever watched sausage being made.
And, uh, I'm, I'll give you some context on these, uh, rather than going over all sixty-six pages. So these plans and policies, there's fifteen of them, are kind of your boilerplate-type plans and policies for CBPG projects. Um, they are very similar to the, the program manual that was adopted for the city of Sanford's two active CBPG projects, so, um, just going to read them off for the, the purpose of, uh, getting it on the agenda or on the, um, uh, public comment. So the, their financial management procedure, the citizen participation plan, procurement standards policy and plan, equal opportunity plan, residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan, uh, the local jobs initiative, which is the section three plan, the, uh, section five oh four self-evaluation survey, that deals with disabilities, um, code of conduct, code of conduct policy, the excessive force policy, uh, recipients plan to further fair housing, the fair housing policy, uh, the language access plan, housing assistance policy, uh, housing construction contract award policy, and a temporary relocation policy. And a couple of these are a little bit different than what is with the city's project, because the city's project has, um, affordable housing, and we're creating lots. And what we're doing in this particular project is, um, three reconstructions, two rehabilitations of existing owner-occupied housing that's scattered around the county. So if there are any questions about any of the plans or policies, I'm here to answer, um, and then there's a resolution to adopt, um, if there's no amendment.
Questions for Chris? Commissioner Martin?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
No questions.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution that's in your packet? Motion's been made to approve the neighborhood revitalization program grant program manual resolution for the 2024 CBPG. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our attorney got grabbed, oh mercy. Moving on to the manager's report, the monthly sales tax distribution report.
Hello, sir. Good evening, board, I am here to bring you the great news that we are three point three four percent ahead of last year's sales tax collections at this time. This is the May 2025 sales tax distribution report, and I'm, I'm here to answer any questions you have, and I thought everybody was here for my sales tax report, so.
You know, when we talk money and everybody leaves, that's a scary thing.
I'm starting to take it personal.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Sharp, questions for Jen? Commissioner Reeves, questions for Jen?
Good news, thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner? Commissioner Lovick?
None, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Martin? Okay, thank you very much, Jen. It's almost like being in Army, yes? That's what I, well, I, you know, I told Wendy you were going to be late tonight. Moving on. County managers, monthly managers' report.
Before I start into the report, I would like to ask Ben to come, Ben McCrea, to come up and introduce our new fellow that we have with us, who has really gotten broken in tonight to see really what local government should work like with public representation and stuff. So, Ben?
Yes, good evening, commissioners. Um, I would like to introduce Cameron Terry, he's our new lead for NC fellow. You may remember some of our previous fellows, most recently being Emma Bach, who worked with, uh, Community Support Services Department. Cameron will be working with administration on our developing, uh, after you all passed your most recent board goals at the board retreat, we're fully developing our operational plan for all of our departments to help achieve your goals, so he will be instrumental in that process, um, and also getting, getting him exposed to the budget, and then lots of communication projects as well. So I'd just like to introduce him to you all and give him a Florida. Speak a little bit.
Hey, y'all, good evening, commissioners, I don't have much to say, I'll keep it short, I know it's running late, but I appreciate y'all, uh, putting in the hard work tonight. Uh, I, my background's from North Carolina School of Science and Math for high school in Durham, and then NC State, uh, in Raleigh, and then Chapel Hill, so I've been around the triangle, and I'm very happy to come over to Sanford and work with you all, um, and I'm looking forward to an exciting eleven months, so, thanks.
Thank you, Cameron.
I will try to get through this manager's report relatively quickly, so I'm going to let y'all read some of it, but I do want to point out some particular things. Please remember that our grand opening celebration for the Lee County Athletic Park will be on Saturday, September thirteenth, beginning at two o'clock. There will also be a staff and family event on Friday night preceding that from five PM to eight PM. Um, and right now, we've got a tremendous turnout, um, of people saying they will be attending, so we're looking forward to that event along with the grand opening. Um, want to make sure I read, point out to you certain change orders. We have approved three change orders, um, additional sod on fields six, seven, and eight for forty-two thousand fifty-five dollars, and that was done to stop erosion on slopes and around drains. Then we have a fire alarm initiator of a thousand three hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents that was required by the fire marshal to complete inspection, and then we were also required to put in some playground step handrails for three thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy cents. We're moving ahead with the library project, no recent change orders on that project. At the last meeting, you did approve a change order for the historic courthouse. Um, I did want to point out one other thing to you. Back during the budget season, I was asked to send letters to our representatives asking for consideration of funding for sewer connections for schools currently on septic systems. I wanted to let you know, I never did send those letters because after doing some research, I have discovered, uh, confirmed that all Lee County schools are already connected to sewer in Lee County, all public schools. I have confirmed that with the schools and with environmental health, so I just wanted to report that to you. Other than that, I think you can see the meeting schedule, um, staff and some of the commissioners will be attending the, um, Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference, um, later this week in Pitt County, um, and then you can see for yourself the regular, the rest of the meetings there. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for the manager? Commissioner Sharp?
No questions.
Commissioner Reeves?
I just got one regarding the sports complex. Have they finished all of the landscaping around the perimeters?
When you say the perimeters?
Okay, you know, the park is in here, all this is inside the park, there's growth out here, very close to some of the fences.
Do you know the status of that, Jen?
Some of the, some of the perimeter is going to be controlled. If it's on the DOT side by Broadway Road, we, we're going to kind of lean towards broad, uh, towards DOT for finishing up some of that work, because they're going to be coming back through probably six months plus from now. Uh, we do intend to look at putting some addition, additional trees along the line by the, um, Shallowell Church side, um, that are in addition to the plantings that are already there, but that'll be, and that's something that we'll look at doing in addition to the project. Um, and we're working with the church on that, and we've already told them. Um, other than that, I think we're still waiting on the, the fencing is going to be installed around the, the graveside area, um, and I don't know if there's any additional concerns, I'm, I'm not aware of any at the moment.
Okay, the entrance right off of the road is not very.
It is not at this point, and I hate to say that it probably will not look a whole lot better when we have opening day because we are subject to the DOT because of the road widening there, so.
Give me a man in the change zone, I'll fix that for you.
We will look at it.
I do intend to reach out to DOT to see if they can at least smooth out that divot at the entrance prior to the opening.
And the properties on the left and right are private, they don't belong to us. Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Lovick?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
No, thank you.
Okay, moving right into commissioners' comments, we'll start with Commissioner Martin.
I, I really don't have any comments except to say that I'm really glad we're going to be going home soon.
Thank you. Commissioner Lovick?
Just really quick, thanks, I thought everybody stayed to hear me tonight. So we're all out, no, I do really appreciate the people coming out and voicing their concerns. What a great nation we have to be able to voice our opinions and things, so, thank, thank God for where we live. All right, short and sweet, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick, I was accusing, Commissioner Reeves?
Would we consider perhaps when we have public comments, setting up a row of chairs where people can come and be prepared to come to the podium? When we have a sign-up list, we have ten, fifteen, whatever it might be. It takes some time for some folks to get up here. I know I'm one of them, so I know.
I remember somewhere where someone wanted to sit next to their spouse and they were not giving up their seat, so I'll leave it at that. Commissioner Sharp?
I just want to thank, uh, Commissioner, uh, Martin for making a motion to, uh, proceed with a potential lease agreement with the state, and, uh, and thank you, uh, for the other folks who voted for it tonight, thank you.
I have two things. One, this afternoon, the Sanford Area Growth Alliance had a roundtable with Congressman Brad Knott. I will send you the notes tomorrow. The second thing is, America's 250th anniversary is next year, and there are a handful of counties that are not participating with an active committee. Mayor Salmon called me, and we will work together jointly with the city to put together a committee with minimal expenses, but, uh, I'm asking for, my recommendation is two commissioners, I'll volunteer, two county employees, I know we have some historians at the library, and three or four citizens from the county to participate with the city who will do about the same, two counselors, two city employees, and three to four citizens from the city. I wanted to get permission to move forward with the city on that. Do I have a motion to approve?
What, what do you mean with minimal expenses? I, I, we know how this works now.
Yeah. I'm not looking at anything flamboyant, other than the city's talking about fireworks and.
Okay, then the city would cover that?
Well, I hope so.
All right.
Anyways, it won't be at the athletic park. No fireworks allowed there. So would you? I, I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay. Approve forming a committee with the city on the semi-quinsentennial of the American anniversary, including two commissioners, two county employees, and three to four citizens within the county. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion to adjourn, any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now adjourned, please drive safely, wear your seatbelts, no speeding, thank you very much, staff, appreciate your being here. I wish the citizens had hung in there for a few minutes.